Council members, take their seats, please. Council members, please take your seats. It doesn't sound that good, but that's fine. How's that? Better? I don't know, is it working? Please take your seats.
So that's basically the board, uh, to say, yes, I agree with it.
I now call the March 25, 2019, Cranston City Council, the meeting of the 200, structure permits.
There's three, the 200 hours, they're for temporary curtailments. The other two, Mrs. Committee. The storage, the storage containers.
Approved by the President.
President. He admits for the three, again, I want to say with the storage containers.
President, I, I, I think I, if you want to set all council members notified of the ball.
Yeah.
The protection of
As another side of the council president, for his office, the justice of this one, this one, this one, opinions, um, uh, let everyone to jointly inspector, eligible, we want decisions to either solicit these things, um, whether we, and help us with some of these issues. So if we get our house in our area to move them, uh, we can, I think, uh, but they're gonna have to, I think we, we need to handle some of this stuff, like the council standards, as I said in the past, this paperwork, I think, these decisions and, uh, better opinions to help, perhaps we can, I hate to add much of the coming up.
Under public acknowledgements and connotations, temporary structure neutral, no use of basketball teams. Um, I'd like to call, I think eight, a hundred dollar fine is, I will have the names and just, and then I'll be handed out all of the Fund Administration pro violation administration, but what's going on here? We're given a notice in June. All they had to remove those structures. The last situation, this is not fair to tuition. Business needs is they don't need to know, and we shouldn't change.
Just wanted to congratulate the party in middle school boys' basketball in 2000 and 2019 championship. And so, uh, again, the council and every one of us, uh, extended special wishes and congratulations, which is one of you, uh, thank you for making us proud, thank you for putting Chris in on the map. And so we're going to, Councilman Favickio is going to call each one of you. If you don't mind coming on up and just standing right over here to your right hand side, sitting here so we can take a quick photo, um, if you wish, to, uh, in the picture, totally fine, if we decide not to do part of the picture. Thank you.
Just had a court chaos and told him we had to go to temporary structure permit down the structure. Is it three more temporary? It's under. Alright, sure, alright.
I'm sorry, the evidence has said, I'm not really a different owner, and I hope this is your senior, I urge you not to see this, and on that topic, probably seen before you met her, and the council, you signed.
Next, we have Christopher Feliz, who was seen in July, August, on school and humanities. He's not very on toes. Next, we have the answer, who is, who is in that situation. Is that the, uh, we have a list of decades, you could have a most recent of our buildings were, if you rise both from, also from the money saving gear of, uh, May Fisher?
Yes.
Next, we have, I just wanted to mention, there was an article in Herald, about that, that's our, Congress statement, okay, that 32 had to be spent on, that's gonna be this year's, by additional cost at, okay, 950. Next, we have Jacob Laos, and Commissioner, was he there? We've got a decision, however, that. But if it's not, yeah, but I think it's, it's, it summarizes us. Yeah. Next, we have, Utah.
Put down French, just about, about that, and reply to, uh, GPS navigation and that, their navigation, they take it, as soon as you, that, 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 we, where it comes out, it's a try right turns too late, like, site.
Next, we have, as a car, we have, uh, the state, uh, I know, uh, I see the turn, uh, bring, so we go, uh, see how that, uh, so it's, that's a separation, we'll have a great proposal, so, um, maybe I still have that this week, and I'll sign it, but keep the deeps. But it's, we're rolling. Next, we have Jeffro Vargas, no relation to the council.
And that's, that's the job.
Is this one on? Congratulations. Next, we have Abdul Evans.
Thanks, Councilman.
Nothing, Larry, you. And we have, uh, Dr. Scott, after the administration and the president's comeback to the, uh, the, uh, obviously, I'm seeing, Dr. Basketball, Dog Box, and each one, actually, I visited the space, uh, for, uh, the last company, so you know, you're allowed to, and you're doing, just like, the council, having, kind of, um, it's, I've seen this city, and, uh, it's, it's community membership, uh, my staff, residents, and, uh, and obviously, we, we have some, different residents in our city.
Next, we have, uh, we should, uh, that last week, they passed the, uh, and they made some, uh, for my, um, to, uh, program, showing, for the property, gonna make sure there's a Dixie for Quan, because there are some, and them underground lines, direct, uh, approved by Dixie.
Next, we have, we have, uh, we should be done, uh, it's a new, uh, first position, so passing on, uh, this, uh, sort of, uh, insurance, we've got, uh, do we get a credit to go?
Those are good people, I appreciate, um, in addition, last time, it's like, uh, it's, uh, the pleasure is, and I think it's a great thing, and we do, continue to come in, and, and, uh, right? We're going to go with that, and so, that's, you know, you try to adopt it, to do, uh, period, uh, you know, six, seven, eight, well, that, and, uh, the this, uh, motion, can, uh, save, uh, uh, everything, uh, just, uh, I appreciate the kind words, I'm worth for, hang on a minute, Lascaux family will be there. Uh, uh, we're afraid, this is the fourth, uh, twelfth, uh, in the great, uh, west parking lot, minutes per hour, this shit, go up to the bike path, and you shut that down area as well. The trash is, I wanna try to attack and get, um, so that's just information, um, also, there's something I have to, uh, this is really, uh, about two. I'm going to communicate, she, uh, she looked at me, uh, it's been about a year and a half, there's no, and it's, uh, really, uh, uh, red, uh, and, uh, issue. And some of the limits issue, and I, uh, so, do it for much of it?
Yeah. So, it's, it's, uh, thank you. Next, we have, uh, I mean, that's kind of, uh, so, uh, to, uh, do some, and what to do, uh, uh, to explain, to explain, seems to be.
Uh, next, I'm gonna call, uh, Councilman Hopkins, uh, and Councilman Papascus, to take care of the Cranston Youth Girls Basketball Association, sixth grade travel team.
Just for a second.
Uh, the Cranston Youth Girls Basketball Association, eighth grade travel team, both state champions.
The estimation, I'm assuming, Richard, is Denver, Miami, Miami.
Mr. McCauley, Councilman McCauley's, your next one, neighbor. He said, when you get home today, he wants to play one-on-one under the lights. He wants to challenge you. Congratulations to the pop, uh, boys team, we're very proud of you. Nice to, to Coach Bouchard, great job. Undefeated team, by the way, team undefeated, good job. Well, we have two, ladies night, all the girls in town, a good basketball players as well. The first team that we're going to honor is the sixth grade team, and I'll read you the proclamation, says, be aware to all of the city, that the Cranston City Council hereby issues, congratulations, and this citation, of the Cranston Youth Girls Basketball Association, sixth grade travel team, in capturing the 2019 Rhode Island State Championships. The entire council extends its sincerest congratulations, my best wishes on this memorable occasion, and express their hope for your continuing success in your future endeavors. Motive, uh, so, the first one I'm gonna call up is Maya Lambert, I think eight, uh, a hundred dollar fine, is, uh, this is, uh, Fund Administration pro violation administration, but what's going on here? All they have to remove those structures. The last situation, this is not for a contribution. Business needs is they don't need to know. Ariana, and we shouldn't change. Yard works, and I had, in 2009, since, you have a lead up in 2009, and nothing happened, nothing happened, no, nobody went to Coral, disappeared in the thing, and then, I got in years later, that, for a violation of the law, should be, is going on here? Maybe, they need consistency, person, never, uh, the Gianna Desperino. It's 12 years, and we just had a court chaos and told him we had to go to temporary structure, put it down, is it three more temporary? It's under. Oh, sure. Sienna, not definitely.
The evidence has said, I'm not really a different owner, and I hope this is your senior, I urge you not to see this, and on that topic, probably seen before you met her, and the council, you signed, uh, whatever happens, we think the plot, uh, we're, uh, seeing, uh, 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 uh,
uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh,
uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, uh, is this one on?
Yes, sir. The council, uh, 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 uh,
I guess the future is bright for girls' basketball in the city, Cranston West Falcons, Cranston East Thunder Lady Thunderbolts, the future is very bright. We have the, the second proclamation, be aware to all of this Cranston City Council hereby issues this congratulatory citation, to, blank, of the Cranston Youth Grade Basketball Association, eighth grade travel team, in capturing the 2019 Rhode Island State Championship. The entire council extends its sincerest congratulations, and very best wishes on this memorable occasion, and express their hope for the continuing success in all of your future endeavors, and the first, of my, uh, 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 oh, sure, oh, dude.
I'm sorry, the evidence has said, uh, uh, yeah, the former owner, and I hope this is your senior, I urge you not to see this, and on that topic, probably seen before you met her, and the council, you signed, uh, whatever happens, we think the plot, uh, we're, uh, 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 uh,
Kylie Avendorf. Eden Donovan. Maybe I said, uh, Kaylee McCartham. Sarah Parol. Lindsey Brandow.
Yes, sir. Because we were, uh, 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 uh,
All the coaches, Bill Englund. And the coach, George Sweeney. Congratulations to the eighth grade state champions. See the picture? Blank, of the Cranston Youth Grade Basketball Association, eighth grade travel team, in capturing the 2019. Council extends its sincerest congratulations, and very best wishes on this memorable occasion, and expresses their hope for their continuing success. Let's have one more round? Yeah. Let's have a round of applause for all these athletes. Alright, congratulations to all the athletes and their parents. We're gonna take a couple of minutes recess till that, uh, that the young people wanna leave, you're welcome to leave. See, I know, I don't know if this is working well tonight. I'm trying. Alright, we're gonna take a couple of minutes recess so that the young people can leave if they want. It's not working right. We have the most audio equipment in this place. It's working, but. Maybe it's bears, maybe. Council members.
Robert Hanson, March 4, January 24.
Alright, we convene the meeting. Um, next on the agenda, we have, public hearings. This is limited to docketed matters, does not include new business for introduction, uh, or, uh, council, council member communications, those are not considered, um, docketed items for, for tonight's purposes. Um, so, we have a signup sheet, um, with regard to the, uh, docketed matters. Uh, let's see. Should we do, should we, hold them first, just call them first?
Yeah, we'll call them first.
Alright, first on the list, we have, um, Jeff Gale.
I don't think so. There's something underneath. There you go. My name is, uh, Jeff Gale, uh, 34 Pine Avenue, I'm here to speak about, about two things tonight. The first is to, uh, is to support, uh, Council Donigan, uh, and, and Papascus, I'm finally learning how to say the name. The, uh, I'm ordering, uh, I'm ordering, uh, plastic bags. I think this is, uh, this is just a common sense ordinance. I spent about 15 minutes today, uh, doing some research on it, and I found that, that , uh, that only 1% of plastic bags are, are actually recycled, and Americans use 100 billion plastic bags a year. That can talk to about $307, uh, 307 bags per American, that's almost a bag a day. So, 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 with, with, uh, with Cranston's residents, if we, um, if we cut down the use of their, of their, uh, plastic bags, that, uh, um, at 307 bags, uh, per year, most of which are, are used in Cranston by going to supermarkets, going to hardware stores, uh, uh, basically going to any, uh, retail establishment in the city, that will, that will save, uh, um, almost 25 million plastic bags per year, just in Cranston alone. So, so, this is a really great step forward for, uh, for Rhode Island, we can, uh, we can, uh, we can help to Rhode Island, to, uh, to, and, um, I'm also saying we'll use, uh, plastic bags, and we can, um, and we can make the, uh, uh, we can make the environment better. And, um, and the second, um, and the second one I wanted to, uh, talk on, is the, um, is the resolution, uh, supporting the bill at the, uh, State House, to, uh, to, uh, cities and towns, uh, to, uh, to license, uh, 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 retail stores that sell tobacco. Um, I, uh, um, I actually, uh, um, I actually worked in tobacco control back, back when, uh, when, uh, when Cranston first passed and made the, uh, the, uh, the Licensing Act, and I can tell you that, that, uh, that cigarette makers are still today marketing to kids. They're not supposed to, but they still do. If you go to any, any store that sells legal cigarettes, that's how they get around it, you can get like strawberry flavored, you can get cherry flavored, who wants to smoke a strawberry? I don't think anyone does. That is meant to market the kids. So, 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 so I would urge you to, uh, to support the resolution for the, uh, for the, uh, for the bill at the, uh, at the State House, that, uh, that allow cities and towns to license, uh, 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 retailers who sell, uh, who sell tobacco products. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gale. Uh, next, we have Jennifer Nansy. Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Nansy, I reside at 179 Calumford Road, and I'm also here to speak about the plastic bag ban, which I very strongly support. A few years ago, I had the opportunity to assist Woodbridge Elementary School in a recycling challenge, and that recycling challenge was recycling plastic bags. And in just five short months, just the Woodbridge community recycled 1,832 pounds of plastic bags. So, multiply that by our entire community, and you can then kind of get a grasp of how much this ban can affect the environment, what the positive impact would be, because a lot of people don't properly, as Mr. Gale had said, properly recycle those bags, and they wind up in rainfields and, you know, or in the ocean, or in areas that, you know, they obviously shouldn't be. So, I mean, I, for one, when I went, helped my, my son in his class do this recycling challenge, I was shocked at how much it added up and so quickly, so, I mean, just keep that in mind, about 1,800 pounds of those flimsy little bags in five months. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Pauline DeRosa.
Pauline DeRosa, 97 Cypress Drive. Uh, good evening, President, uh, Favickio.
For the 99th.
Well, Councilman Favickio, and, uh, council members. I would like to, uh, thank council members John Donigan and Edward Brady for sponsoring the resolution to reach the General Assembly to amend SO 414, currently pending. Uh, this would expand the zoning notification requirements in situations that would impact neighboring communities. Prior to any vote taken by the General Assembly, I would suggest some of the members board a bus for a site visit to the Alpine Estates neighborhood in Western Cranston. This would give women the opportunity to actually see the irrevocable damage that has been done by the installation of seven rain turbines, each 519 feet high, and installed by a developer hired by the city of Cranston, without any regard for the residents of Alpine Estates. Some homes are situated only 1,500 feet from the turbines. In order for the General Assembly to make an informed decision, it would seem to me that spending some time in the midst of these turbines would give them a clear impression of the negative impact they have made on the residents of Alpine Estates. In addition, this resolution only refers to systems. While other major land developments be addressed in this resolution, such as Topgolf, a development approved last December, and to be operational in Chapelview in 2020. This type of development would certainly be considered to fall under the category of negative impact, and have far reaching implications involving respiration and traffic in particular. I'd also like to discuss the Plastic Bag Reduction Ordinance 2-19-01, sponsored by Cranston and John Donigan and Chris Papascus. Reducing the number of plastic bags in our city is a noble beginning. However, in order for this initiative to be effective going forward, we need to include plastic bags used by restaurants, the dry cleaning industry, plastic water bottles, et cetera. In 2017 and 2018, other means the powers have been successful in implementing this ban. Some included styrofoam cups and containers. Do we know how they have been proceeding? And has this ban been working in their communities? Have all their businesses complied? Mother Earth has given herself freely, and we have abuse to her kindness. It is time to care for her unconditionally. Our bad behavior will result in catastrophic results. Thank you.
Thank you, Pauline. Anyone else to speak on docketed items?
Suzanne Arena, 88 Rickland Road, Cranston. So, um, I had spoken before, uh, at the, uh, ordinance committee, and, uh, in support of the plastic bag ban. Um, about 10 years ago, I, I brought this up first to the city council, and no one had done it in, in Rhode Island, and so I was so happy to see that you both had put this in, it's about time, um, and the timing is now. So, we know that to recycle per thousand for plastic bags, it's about $3, it's very inexpensive, although it clogs up all the, um, the, um, equipment, so it's constant, it's really actually counterproductive to, to recycling. Um, where paper's $28 per thousand, so it is more expensive. One of the things that was brought up, um, by Councilman Favickio at the last ordinance committee meeting was, you were concerned about lawsuits. So, if you look at all these other towns, which are about 10, they've already had this implemented, so they've been doing it, we don't need to spin our wheels wondering, uh, you know, is, are we gonna have a lawsuit, or, you know, just pick up the phone and just call them, see how they're doing. Um, I'm sure that this has already been vetted out, and they've figured out how to, how to get around, I mean, we're not the first one to do this. Um, the other, the other part is, you know, we're waiting for the state, if the state doesn't pass this, we should, we should just do it now. Um, we should be on the list with the other towns, cities and towns, we're the second largest metropolitan area. Uh, these bags are really only used for 12 minutes, it's kind of a no brainer, so I'd really like to see it as a resident here. Um, 5 cents a bag, mm, I'd probably charge more, um, to have people, um, do this, and also, I think Cranston should put some funds together, because one of the, the, um, problems that they were having with this, the, the bill in the Senate, is that there's a lot of people that are, um, I'm sorry, Mer Eliza vetoed the bill, um, when they tried doing it there, it was because they didn't, he was worried about people who didn't have the money. Um, so what they did was, they did an initiative where they're giving, they're gonna give away so many bags to help people, and it's really important to have stitching in the handles, so you understand that that is actually a recyclable bag. Um, so if Cranston did do it, I, I think it would be a great idea, and again, I, I've mentioned that we could utilize the schools, the kids, we could do an initiative with them, where they could design some bags. Um, you know, um, Twin Oaks was mentioned a lot at the last, at that ordinance meeting, um, that they'd be losing money, um, if they do design bags, I mean, we could, there's a whole bunch of things we could do. Um, and I think that most of the people here are supportive of that, and certainly would work with our council people. The other thing is, on the, um, the resolution for urging the General Assembly about, um, enabling legislation on tobacco, it is really important, right now we have a crisis in Rhode Island, I don't know if you realize, but tobacco use for children is up 78%. That's in our schools. Um, so, I, I'm, and you can order online, you can, you can get something on Amazon, and order your jewelry or other things, which is really scary. Um, I was a smart kid, I could get around things and order I was a smart kid, I could get around things and order stuff and, you know, have someone go buy things for me. But nowadays, it's even easier with Amazon. So my thing is, I have a 15-year-old and a 17-year-old, and they have been caught several times with the jewel in their backpacks, which I'm supporting apparently, because I'm giving them money for lunch, but this is what they buy. So it's really important that we have a resolution going in that having stores only selling to kids that are over 21, and there has to be a really strong consequence for kids that are caught. So that's all I have to say, I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen, and ladies. Yeah. Director. I want to talk about the resolution encouraging to go anywhere to work on fumming, hypocrisy, old highway garages. Councilman Paplaskas and I discussed this two, three years ago. I'm not against this, but what I want to do is give you a little heads up and think about it. The location, where we have St. Mary's Feast, and the lot we're talking about making a park, that's where all the tractor trailers go, two large dumpsters that are filled with trash, the vendors, they park their cars in there. On any given night, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, if you go down Park Avenue with 38 Westies and Blue Moon and all those other restaurants, those parking lots are full. And the parking lot where this proposed park is going is loaded. My question to you, when you consider this, where are all these cars going to park if we make this park for the community? Where are the tractors, trailers, and dumpsters going to go during St. Mary's Feast? And where are they going to park their cars on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights? The only place they have is the side streets and both sides of Park Avenue. I just wanted to bring this to your attention and give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Anyone else to speak on docketed matters?
Good evening. Thank you, councilors, for having the opportunity to speak to you. I just want to speak on one item. I'm sorry, Tom Wojcik, W-J-I-C-K, 11th Hall Place. Thank you. And I just wanted to restate my support for the ban on plastic bags, and I congratulate Councilor Paplaskas and Councilman Donigan for really taking up this issue. And I do have additional 367 people that couldn't show up this evening, who signed a petition on change.org, who are in support of this. And so I wanted to place this with you, so that you could also see that it's not just the handful of us that are here. So I'll give this to you. My second comment is that at the ordinance meeting, I think it was administration, said that they would prefer to hold off on this ordinance until we see what the state does. And I just want to say that that's a complete downer. Has someone who takes pride in Cranston and wanted to take initiative to have a mayor say, "Let's just sit back and wait and see what someone else does"? There's a lot of energy, there's a lot of pride in Cranston, and even though we may only be the eighth or ninth or 10th community that's going to do this, we feel good about this. Why not take the initiative? Why not be where the energy is going? I mean, to just sit back and say, "Let us wait for someone else to do the work"? I think it's just, I don't know, wrong thing for me. I do have one other, if you would allow me, just to acknowledge someone?
Sure.
Okay. With all the acknowledgements that took place, I don't know if they were aware, but in the audience tonight, there is a woman, a teacher, Nancy Vitino. And she received a distinguished award from the Sondheim Spirit Teacher Award from the New York Kennedy Center for Performing Arts as one of the four teachers in the United States. And it's a significant achievement and recognition. And so I know Nancy is in the audience tonight, and I definitely should, I wish I had the exact words in front of me, but my phone didn't, but I just think that that's an amazing achievement.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else on the docketed items? Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Robert Wilson, 114 Mayflower Drive, Cranston. I'm here to speak about yard works. I was last here on February 25th. I was speaking about yard works, discussing the three items I had before.
Excuse me one second, is that under council communications? That's not a docketed matter for vote. That, can I come and speak after?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, just on the docketed matters for the time being.
Hi, Drake Patton, 684 Maida Avenue. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my business, Clark Farm Garden &amp; Home. And I'm really excited about this plastic ban proposal. And I have heard the conversations about the impacts on businesses. And as a business owner, granted, I don't use plastic bags, and the majority, I'm using paper, which we have also cycled out, and I am training my customers to cycle out. We can, as businesses, all do that. And that's a choice. And I have heard the mayor say businesses are against this. I know a lot of businesses that are for this, and I hope that we're being heard as well. And one of the ways that businesses can contribute to this, and I think many of us would be willing to do that, and I certainly am willing to do that tonight, is that we all put some money into a fund to provide reusable bags. My business sells them, so we've got a little advantage there, but it is an inexpensive investment on behalf of the business community. And I feel confident there would be others that would join me in that. So let's not wait, let's do this. And let's be leaders. I really agree with my neighbors on that. It's time to do this, and we can. Let's be proud of it. So thank you for this work.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name and address.
J. B. Hamdair, 41 Oak Street. About the plastic bag ban, one of the things is, me and my family, along with my team, since 2017, has been helping out with cleaning the Shenandoah Lake come Earth Day. And one of the pet peeves I see is I see plastic bags everywhere. You see them in the trees, you see them in the water. This has got to be, this has to change, it has to change. Walk down the bike path, you see it there. You walk down Bain, you see it there. You know, we need a change in this city first. If we can show change, we can show our younger generation about that change. So I urge council to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have none. That section of the meeting is closed. We'll now go to the ordinances. 1-19-02, Ordinance Amendment of Title 15.12 of the Code of the City of Cranston, 2005 and Title Building Code. You want to start with the visiting? Okay. All right. We're going to skip that and go to the first resolution, and then we'll go to further items. First, we have a resolution encouraging the administration and the City Council grant writer to work on the funding for a park at the old Highway Garage property on Phoenix Avenue, sponsored by Councilmember Paplaskas, co-sponsored by Councilmembers Donovan, Vargas, Brady, McCourly, Hopkins, Styches, Favickio, and Fariah, so the entire council, basically. I'll entertain a motion. Motion approved. Motion in a second, under discussion. Councilman Paplaskas.
Thank you, Council President, Acting Council President Favickio. I put this resolution in after speaking with many of the, many members of the community way in Knightsville. We have the empty space at the Highway Garage, Old Highway Garage property that's been underutilized for many, many years. If we can turn that into a park, it would be a great addition to a neighborhood that's frequented by so many. We have great restaurants, we have great shopping, and it would be an accent to enable where we could have art festivals and do more things with a space that's not really used, other than parking one week during the year. Now, I do hear Director Libertori's comments, but it is definitely a concern for that week. I have spoken with members of the Feast Society that are willing to make many changes to where they're parking, because they understand that making that space better is for the greater good of the neighborhood and it would be more utilized, so that they could use it too. Everybody could use that open space. There were suggestions made, maybe talking to George Peters, because the schools close during the summertime, we could park some trucks there. There was discussion about using the last two rows at Knightsville Manor as well for additional parking. So we can make arrangements on that. This is just a resolution to look into it. We're obviously not going to build a park tomorrow, we may not build a park for years, we might not ever build a park, but this is a stepping stone, I think, in the right direction, where we can leave a foundation and at least look at it. So I urge passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Brady.
Just sort of what I said in the committee, Chris, I think you've done a tremendous job in bringing this possibility to a reality, and I look forward to looking into it in my, and I definitely do. Director Libertori brought up some good points, and I'm glad that you've already spoken to Peters, as we've discussed in the past, for some alternatives. Obviously, in furthering this process, I would also urge speaking to the local businesses that you brought up tonight regarding parking, but obviously, I'm still in support of what I think would be a great addition in the community.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, my president. Just as an alternative to this parking issue, I know I've been to an awful lot of college and professional events over the years. For example, if you go to the CVS Golf Tournament, you don't park at the tournament, you park at Secoak Speedway, and the buses shuttle you in. As an alternative to this, if it's a parking problem, maybe we can somehow work out parking at Western Hills, and then using the shuttle service from Western Hills down into the Feast area. Any type of major event where there's a parking issue, that's usually the way professional sports teams or college teams handle those events.
Councilman Styches.
Thank you. I think this is a really good resolution, I support it, but I would like to know if the administration has a position on this?
We do support the park, but we do have the same issues that, not issues, concerns that Director Libertori has. I think the issue regarding the parking for the Feast could definitely be managed. I think we're more concerned with that Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, and how those vehicles and those customers, those businesses are going to be able to partake in the restaurants in that area. So I think that's our only, our bigger concern as opposed to the Feast.
Good. I just would urge the administration to start thinking about a proposal for a grant from the EM when they open their open space grants. What seems to happen to us is that we don't prepare for these ahead of time, and then they announce a grant round with proposals being made available, or proposals, a deadline for proposals being, say, a month away, and we can't, as a city, get a proposal together in time. So I think that there's strong support for this on the council, obviously. The administration supports the idea, and I think that now is the time to start working on a proposal, so that when the DEM grant round comes around, we're there to say, "Yes, we want you to pay for half of this proposal to make this park larger and of more use to the citizens." So, thank you.
Sure. Just a note, the resolution does ask our grant writer to get involved in that process, Councilman Styches, so hopefully our grant writer can work with the city. Anyone else from the council? Councilmember Vargas.
Actually, I just wanted to point out, Councilman Paplaskas, I just put, just for those who are wondering how the park will look like, at least a blueprint, it's the picture that he just brought right up in front of the front main counter. I don't know if you want to bring it up. So at some point, maybe down the line, we can get a easel, so we're introducing something, people have the visibility of seeing what it is that we're talking about, just so that we're all on the same page. But that's pretty much the picture of the proposed site that we were discussing.
I just wanted to thank Councilman Paplaskas for doing that. I think that's the first time that anyone's been able to produce a print like that of other proposals on the council, so it's very unique, and I think it's great, it's a great rendition, and hopefully it'll become a reality. Anyone else? Councilman Donovan.
Excuse me. Yeah, I just, I fully support this. I think it's critical in urban environments to not only protect the open space we do have, but try and expand on this. And I think, I don't live in Knightsville, I live in the stadium area, and I'm fortunate to have the Bain track right there in my neighborhood, and I'm sure the people in Knightsville are excited about this proposal, so I fully support this.
Okay. Councilman McCourly.
Thank you, Acting Council President. I also want to commend Councilman Paplaskas. I know you worked hard on this, Chris, and not many things go 9-0 when it's endorsed, but that's what you achieved on this proposal, so I fully support it also.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. I'll put my two cents in, I think it's a great proposal, I think we'll work hard, you know, with our grant writer and with the city to try to make it a reality. It takes a little time, I did a park of my own, it took a couple of years to get it to fruition, but it's worth the effort, so I want to thank Councilman Paplaskas. No other comment, I will ask the clerk, please take a roll.
Pass the recitals?
Yes.
Pass the remarks?
Yes.
Yes. Pass on the floor?
Yes.
Pass on the balcony?
Yes.
Pass on the green?
Yes.
Pass on the access?
Yes. Yes. Resolution passes. Next, we have another resolution. Resolution urging Rhode Island General Assembly to amend Senate 0414, currently pending, that would expand the zoning notification requirements in situations impacting our neighboring communities, sponsored by Council President Fariah, council members Brady and Donigan, co-sponsored by council members Hopkins and Paplaskas. And with the sponsors, okay, I'll add my name to it as well. Do I have a motion? So move second. Motion and a second, under discussion. Councilman Brady.
Thank you, Acting Council President. As well, residents of Alpine Estates have been severely impacted by the new tour bans of Johnston. As Councilman Hopkins and myself have taken the time to meet with many residents and go to community-based meetings, talk to as many people as possible, and brought this issue in addition to other issues that have been experienced throughout my town here in the council with soda farms and other impacting things throughout the community, it's becoming very evident that the new two notification has been on 200 feet. So what this resolution is doing is asking, you know, Senator Bader to basically expand that 200-foot radius to 1 mile, and in hopes to obviously educate our communities to know that they're going to be impacted. So for starters, I'd like to thank Councilman Donovan for helping draft this, and obviously, Mr. Hopkins for continuing to be there by my side and helping me through this processes in the council. Anyone else on the council who's basically answered all the questions that I've needed? So that's basically what I'm asking today, is to, and Councilman Donovan will be able to speak on this, but we've also given Senator heads up and a touch base.
Councilman Donovan.
Yeah. You know, this came out of the hearings we had on the turbines in Johnston and, you know, I've only been on the council for, I guess, three months now. And before that, but during this time, I've... What I've heard over different proposals is people, members of the communities, often feel like at times they don't have a voice or they're kind of left out of the process. I think expanding the notification requirements will give everyone the opportunity that's going to be affected by projects. That way, they have due notice and they can adequately prepare and respond at public hearings. So, I feel that this will... Expanding it at the state level to a mile will give people a better opportunity to raise their voice when they have concerns. So, for that reason, I'm happy to work with Councilman Brady and all the other co-sponsors for this.
Councilman McQuarley?
Thank you, Acting President. I ask, I believe, if I could be added as a co-sponsor because I think this is tremendous. It's a long time coming and I commend both of you gentlemen for the work you put into it.
It's okay, so ordered. Anyone else? Councilmember Vargas?
I had a question and I had a conversation with Councilman Donigan on this. And so, the resolution in itself, as it stands, doesn't mention a mile yet on the one that's because it's being heard, I believe, on Wednesday or Thursday at the State House. So, we have to... So, which I believe it's the 27th, so it's probably on Wednesday. So, assuming that he is changing the language, only the section of one mile on here, I am perfectly fine if there's any language at all. That's my only concern, that then I'm supporting any added language that we... That is going to be unforeseen by Wednesday, from here to Wednesday. I'll support it as with the one mile and I'm hoping that that's the way it stays and it certainly doesn't get changed to any less, you know, any less or any other language impacted on this bill. So, with that being said, I'll support it the way it stands for now.
Councilmember Rand, we're going to see if we can pull it up and see if it does have a radius on there. The other thing is they usually, you know, they vet these and they tweak them. There could be many amendments that are made, so I, you know...
Correct. So, I'm sorry, Council President, to interrupt you, but yes. And that's what I'm saying. I don't know if there's going to be any additional changes. I agree that we should definitely be changing this from what it stands now to 1,000 feet. It's definitely a concern. I am definitely there and I understand the frustration that the residents in that western side of Cranston are going through and that's why I support it. I just want to make sure that there's no additional language suddenly that's going to be come out of that Wednesday meeting that's going to then not benefit us.
Okay. I'm told that the current bill talks about increasing it from 200 feet to 500 feet and I think part of that is maybe cautionary because the impact... Rhode Island's so small and the neighborhood's a small 500-foot radius can encompass quite a few houses. 1,000 feet can encompass an enormous amount of property. But I'm sure that this... The General Assembly is going to, you know, debate this quite extensively and hopefully, they'll come up with something and we'll be... Unfortunately, we'll be stuck with whatever they come up with, but hopefully, they'll impose a restriction or allow us to go beyond city lines because right now, the biggest problem is not necessarily whether it's 500 feet or 1,000, it's whether it goes into the neighboring city. And that's a big issue. That's why we're unable to get notice to the neighbors.
I agree.
We're just checking. Anyone else? Want to speak on this? Okay. Councilman Hopkins, nothing? Okay. Yeah, I'm in favor of it. I think it's going to be tweaked by the General Assembly and hopefully, something passes up there. I think we need to get some enabling legislation so we can provide notice or get our hands on some notice and when projects of this magnitude happen, hopefully, they'll even consider some other types... There may be other types of renewable energy that require notice. So, I hope they vet this extensively, but I'm in favor of it as well. No other comment? The clerk, please take the roll. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Next, we have Report of Committees. Safety Services and Licenses Committee, Councilmember Peploskis.
Thank you, Council President Ficchio. First on the Safety Services and Licensing Committee, we have Class B Victim and Liquor License New, Spice Craft Inc., DBA Shaska, 16 Midway Road. This passed unanimously in committee.
entertain a motion? Approve? Second? Under discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Moving on, on the Safety Services agenda, we have a resolution urging the General Assembly to pass enabling legislation for municipal tobacco licensing, sponsored by councilmembers Hopkins and Steikos. This passed unanimously and I urge passage.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Any discussion? Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, President. I just want to kind of remind the audience that we addressed an issue on tobacco, especially the drilling issue, I'm guessing, 12 months ago. We passed that ordinance, basically keeping an eye on the underage smoking. I introduced it as legislation last year and we've discussed that in length. We had some real good feedback, publicity in the Herald. And again, the follow-up of the ordinance is always the key and I see kids all coming out of school with the drilling and smoking. But we did pass an ordinance last year, basically, on this issue, so...
Thank you. Councilman Steikos?
Just briefly to explain why this is necessary, although the city's power to establish a tobacco licensing requirement was upheld in federal court, the tobacco industry went... They always go with other funny names and things like the Convenance Store Owners Association, but they succeeded in getting a Supreme Court, State Supreme Court ruling that... Excuse me, a Superior Court ruling that struck down tobacco ordinances in Barrington and Middletown. And so, that's why this is necessary because there is state licensing and then there is city licensing and this court decision says that you can't have city licensing. We currently charge $150 for a... To sell tobacco. So, I think it's a very dangerous product. It is horrible when one of your friends dies of lung cancer and any other... The many diseases associated with cigarette smoking and so, I think we need to license this... The right to sell this dangerous product. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Brady?
I wish to... Any Councilmen, Steikos and Councilman Hopkins, for their work on this and if it's okay with them, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
No objection, what names are added? Anyone else? Councilmember Vargas?
If possible as well, I'd like to be added on as a co-sponsor. Definitely a huge issue, huge issue in our schools. I hear about it all the time. I have a daughter who's at Cranston East. I see Facebook postings all the time about parents dealing with situations like this and, you know, I think it's something that we really need to attack and we need to attack it with force and we need to go... We need to educate our children and like some of the folks who testified this evening before us, definitely the tobacco industry at this point is really after the young adults making it... Having a different type of flavors and everything along those lines. So, I can't say anymore but to say that I'd be happy to co-sponsor this if possible you guys would allow me to. Thank you.
If no one else has anything, I'd just add my two cents on this. I think I agree with the resolution. I think this is an area where we need enabling legislation. Much of what we do at the city level requires enabling legislation from the state and if we don't have General Assembly approval for certain things, we can't control it. Liquor, tobacco, firearms, other issues. So, I think this is absolutely necessary so that we can put to rest the issue. As Councilman Steikos mentioned, the Superior Court had struck down... Struck down a couple of ordinances in three towns and there's currently something pending in Johnston, another lawsuit pending in Johnston. So, this issue could be resolved pretty quickly by the General Assembly if they give the municipalities enabling legislation. So, I'm going to support this as well. I have a motion and a second. Clerk, please take the roll. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Okay, next. That's it for Safety Services, Councilman? Okay. Finance Committee, I'm going to ask Vice Chair Hopkins to handle the finance committee.
Thank you, President. The first item is a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements and that passed unanimously in committee.
entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Councilman Donigan?
I'm just gonna... Because my home is on here and it is part of public record. I spoke with the tax assessor today. I'm not trying to vote on lowering the... I will abstain from this vote for ethics purposes because I'm not going to vote on lowering the tax value on my home. That wouldn't be ethical, but nor did I put in for this, for the record. This reevaluation occurred in concurrence with the state reassessments, but when my wife, well, now wife and I bought our home in 2017, I guess there's a city ordinance and so, something changed and that's why it's lowered. So, I did not... I did not put in an appeal to lower my tax.
For the record, Councilman Donigan was shocked when he saw it because he had nothing to do with it. I think it happened prior to... Maybe prior to his ownership as well, so... Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll. Yes. 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 Yes.
Next, resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements and that was passed unanimously in committee. Motion to approve.
And motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Third one is a resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements that passed unanimously in committee.
entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Last, Finance Item is a tax interest waiver approvals and that passed unanimously in committee.
entertain a motion to approve? We have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. That's all for Finance. Thank you, Councilman... Claims Committee, Councilmember McQuarley.
Just if you produce the report of settle claims for informational purposes, Madam Clerk, is there anything else that needs to be said on these matters?
No. Okay. Yeah, that's for information only. Thank you very much, Councilman. Ordinance Committee, I'm going to ask Vice Chair Peploskis to handle reads.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. This feels like old times because I chaired this committee last year. First up on the ordinance committee, we have 1-19-02, ordinance and amendment of Title 15.12, Dakota City of Cranston 2005 entitled Building Code, scaffolding permit request, sponsored by Councilmember McQuarley, co-sponsored by councilmembers Hopkins, Brady and Vargas. This was amended in committee and I believe passed unanimously.
entertain a motion? Second? Under discussion?
If I may, Acting Council President, I'll defer to the administration. There is one tidy-up situation we have to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's see, the Congress speaks of the fine. A fine of $25 shall be imposed by the building official. The building official does not have the authority to impose fines, so I would ask if we could just amend that to say upon conviction. And then upon conviction, the fines can be put in place.
So, you want to take out by the building inspector and just put in upon conviction? Or by the court? Would that be sufficient? Upon conviction would be the best. Okay. Thank you. So, is I in the form of motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend so that the first line would read, "A fine of $25 per week shall be imposed upon conviction."
Okay. So, a motion and a second on this amendment. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Now, on the original ordinance, we have a motion. Motion to approve as amended. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Next, moving on, we have 2-19-01, ordinance and amendment of Title 8, Dakota City of Cranston 2005 entitled Health and Safety Plastic Bag Reduction, sponsored by councilmembers Peploskis and Donigan, co-sponsored by councilmembers Vargas and McQuarley. This was amended in committee and passed unanimously and I urge passage.
Do I entertain a motion? Is that motion? We have a second, under discussion. Councilman Peploskis?
Thank you, Council President. You know, the genesis, I said this in committee, the genesis of this ordinance was the fact that the first time I took my son fishing at Machanick at Lake Park, we caught more plastic bags than we did fish. So, plastic is an issue. I know we're never going to get rid of it all, but we need to start somewhere. It takes 1,000 years for a plastic bag to decompose. Less than 1% get recycled. The ones that do end up in our blue bins contaminate the load that goes to the recycling centers. So, it's an issue. We need to do something to deal with it. Really happy that my colleague, Councilmember Donigan and everybody else here, that's how I'm his co-sponsors, is a believer in this. We need to start somewhere. I'm hoping that Cranston, being the second largest city in the state, can take the lead on this and really show the state of Rhode Island how it's done. So, I urge passage. Thank you.
Councilman Donigan?
I think I second what my colleague said and really, there's... I'm not sure there's a whole lot left to be said. I'm glad that we could do this in a bipartisan manner. I just, I think it's the right thing to do. It's a step in the right direction. And I think it's the first step in the right direction towards other means that we can take to try and protect our local environment here in Cranston. So I implore everyone on the council tonight to hopefully support this. Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, President. I want to congratulate Councilman Paplaskas and Donigan. I know this has been a tough back-and-forth type of ordinance that we've discussed. I like to remind all of my fellow councilmen that we've gone a roll. We've voted eight to nothing or nine to nothing for about three weeks, three meetings in a row. And I would hope that that will continue on this ordinance. So again, thank you, Chris.
Senator Brady? Just kind of, for Councilman Hopkins said, I'm a new councilman and I want to start off by saying that I appreciate everyone. I see a lot of familiar faces that continue to come to meetings and the feedback is crucial. I'm listening to everything that's said and my opinion sometimes is weird. And I just want to say that I really appreciate all the feedback and emails and the contact that you continue to go out of your way to get the information to us. Further than that thought, I did feel that it is an opportunity as a council here to continue this bipartisan effort. Republicans working with Democrats to do this best for the city of Cranston. And I hope the residents are seeing that it doesn't matter what party you're in, we're listening to you and we're trying to get it done. I brought up some reservations I had with this ordinance in committee and I'm very happy and fortunate that they were heard. And I'm not going to divulge this tonight because I did reach out to the Ethics Commission and just asked them, which I gave John and Chris a heads up, what my stance would be as a restaurant owner, although I do use plastic in my restaurants. I want to be safe inside and we can't get back to more than until April month. So I will be obscene until, but I do it with passes.
Councilwoman Vargas.
Thank you, Council President. I too would like to commend both of my colleagues on this bipartisan effort representing Ward One where I have never gained a fee and protect a river that's also right in our backyard. You know, we have to continue to protect our environment, continue to protect the coastal wildlife. So again, I really appreciate the fact that both of you, and the time that it's taken for the both of you to work together and to know that this matter really, really addresses the concern of many constituents and residents in general of Ward One. I've spoken to a few restaurants in that area and so far they haven't said to me till this day, you know, that's a concern of mine to actually have, go from plastic bags to paper bags. So with that being said, I support this passage of this ordinance.
Okay. Anyone else?
Councilman McCauley. I commend Councilmember Paplaskas, Councilmember Donigan. I echo what Councilmember Hopkins said. It's truly a joy to work with these folks. So far, I hope this dream ride doesn't end. I'll fully support this ordinance tonight and I commend the authors.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. I feel, I have a few issues with it, not because I'm against it, but because I'm not sure if it goes far enough. I think there was some, the General Assembly is going to vet this extensively and it is a defined period of time because their session is in the middle, almost in the middle right now. It'll be over in a matter of a couple of months. So that's one issue I think we're going to be dictated to by the General Assembly, whatever they do. The second issue is I was in favor of waiting so that Councilman Brady could get his opinion from the Ethics Commission and vote his conscience on this either way. Thirdly, I'm not sure that we can add some more incentives for other industries to go to paper and recyclable materials and maybe even moving up the date. So I'm not in favor of it tonight. I'd like to, I'd like to see it go further. I'd like to see the date moved up from July of 2020 on whatever we're able to agree on, especially after the state weighs in in a matter of probably two months. So other than that, I think we're going to be addressing this again very soon. And I think we're going to look at all different ways that we can promote recycling, maybe even charging for the plastic rather than for the paper so that we can encourage and incent for businesses. Because we're going to have some exceptions, I believe, to the, to this ordinance because of the other industries that are using plastic. So while I'm not going to vote for it tonight, I think we're going to be looking at making some amendments in the future and I think we may be able to go even further. So that's all I have to say. No other comment? Please take the roll.
Senator Donigan?
Yes.
Senator Rockland?
Yes.
Senator Rockland?
Yes.
Senator Donigan?
Yes.
Senator Brady?
Yes.
Senator Rockland?
Yes.
Senator Paul?
Yes.
Senator Rockland?
No. That's the next on the agenda, resolutions.
Thank you, everybody. Next, on the ordinance committee, we have 2-19-03, ordinance amendment of Chapter 10.32 of Title 10 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Union Terrace Four Way Stop Sponsored by Mayor Fong. I believe this was passed unanimously in committee.
Motion approved. Second. Any discussion? Any none, clerk, please take the roll.
Senator Donigan?
Yes.
Senator Rockland?
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 Yes.
Okay. Moving on, we have 2-19-07, ordinance amendment of Chapter 10.12, Dakota City of Cranston 2005 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Norfolk Street Turn Prohibition of Removal, sponsored by Councilmember McCauley, co-sponsored by Councilmembers Paplaskas, Brady, Vargas, Stikos, Donigan, Hopkins, Council Vice President Favickio, and Council President Freener. This passed unanimously and I urge passage.
Motion approved. Any discussion?
Councilman McCauley, I want to thank my fellow members for co-sponsoring this with me. I did a walkthrough and I appreciate Councilmember Vargas also for helping me out with the walkthrough through the neighborhood just to get a feedback prior to this. And we found that it was a non-issue with the residents, but it's a life-saving tool for Walgreens Beef. If they can't get access to that parking lot, which is limited now to six spots, they can't get to the other eight. This will certainly keep them in business and he's very appreciative. He employs 12 people there, not all full-time, but it's, they've been a good neighbor of the city of Cranston for 30 years. And 2-19-03, I'm sorry, 2-19-07 goes hand in hand with 2-19-08. We have to clean it up. Thanks to the work of Madam Clerk, she helped me with this. You have to re-initiate the turn to be able to continue with 2-19-08. So I urge you to vote to approve this. Thanks.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, President. I want to thank Councilman McCauley for the effort on doing all of this work. Again, this is an opportunity for the council to help a small business that reached out to us and needed the space so that his business could continue. Walgreens Beef has been a landmark restaurant for us here in the city of Cranston and we're reaching out with these two ordinances to try to help this business stay right where it is. So thank you again, Councilman.
Councilman Brady?
Just echo what Mr. Hopkins said. I also want to applaud Councilman McCauley for his efforts here and his continued efforts in his ward. He continued that residents saw, you know, contact him and he listens. And I've had some great experiences with him. We've had a gentleman that came to a lot of community meetings and complained about this and I'm glad that we could listen as a councilman and hopefully pass this tonight. So keep up the good work, buddy.
Anyone else? I too would like to echo my thanks to Councilman McCauley for doing all the work on this. It, although it works for just one small business, it is a small business that's been in the city for 30 years and I think we've all frequented the restaurant. So anything we can do to keep that in business is a good thing. Motion in the second, no further discussion. Please take the roll.
Senator Donigan?
Yes.
Senator Rockland?
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 Yes. Yes. Okay.
Moving on, we have 2-19-08, ordinance amendment of Chapter 10.412 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Norfolk Street One Way Removal, sponsored by Councilmember McCauley, co-sponsored by Councilmembers Paplaskas, Brady, Vargas, Stikos, Donigan, Hopkins, Council Vice President Favickio, and Council President Freener. This ties in with the last ordinance and it passed unanimously in committee. I urge passage.
Motion approved. Second. A motion in the second, any discussion?
Councilman McCauley? Well, I may just quickly, I know we just rehearsed this, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank former Council, former Director Muskie and also current Director Perello for their help in this also. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any none, clerk, please take the roll.
Senator Donigan?
Yes.
Senator Rockland?
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 Yes. 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 And Council President Favickio, we had already voted on the resolution for the proposal for Mitzvah, so that concludes the business of the ordinance committee. Thank you, Councilman. Next, we have public hearing on undocumented items, on anything you want to speak on.
Suzanne Reenan, 88 Lakeland Board. Can you, can you hear me? Good. So the reason I'm here, because I've had, my dog was attacked for the last four months, five times. He's a little 30-pound dachshund eagle mix and the issue is, the last two times, we actually reported it. Once was at 9:00 at night, there was a pit bull that was run out of the house off leash and came and attacked the dog. Luckily, he has a choker, so the other dog got his mouth more cut up than my dog did. So he lost a piece of his ear on that one. But the police did come out and the Cranston police officer wanted to know about his shots, said she would go over and talk to the other dog owner. And that was the end of it. She said, "If there's any issue, we'll call you." Okay. And you can get the report. Now, back up a week ago, I'm walking my dog on a leash that you can see. And as we walk, three dogs that are boxers came and one of them attacked my dog. The owner tried getting his third dog off of my dog and wasn't working, so he ended up kicking the dog with his steel-toed boots. I digress, sorry. So anyhow, they're off a leash, these dogs. And I ended up walking away and finally got my dog, which had bit his dog. And the police officer I called came out and said, "Well, now that your dog's got his shots, we're going to go, I'm going to go over and check with the other person." I said, "That's great." So that was the end of it. I didn't know anything else. And I got a phone call the next day from the police officer, it was Saturday morning, and said, "You were seen walking your dog in the neighborhood." I said, "Yes, that's what I do on this leash." "Well, you're not supposed to." I said, "Why?" "Well, there's an ordinance." First, she said an ordinance. She said, "And you can't do that. You have to have home confinement." I'd never heard of that. Okay, so now we go fast forward. Of course, I want to know what that is. Well, she couldn't tell me the law, but she said she'd mail me something. Okay, I don't know for how long, nothing. So I go to Monday and I get in my mailbox a piece of paper that is not mailed to me, but it just says basically that you have to keep your dog on strict confinement. Okay, it doesn't give you the ordinance, it's from the Cranston Police, it's just a piece of paper. And doesn't tell me how long, and so I called. And she said, "Well, it does say it." And I said, "No, actually, it doesn't tell me how long to keep the dog in the house or in my yard." So there's a problem with the way the process is. I did call DEM, I finally got through to the department and they said that it's a state law that if your dog attacks another dog, that both dogs have to have confinement. I said, "Well, my dog's clearly the victim." And the owner of the other dog is outside a lot whistling, which terrifies my little dog at this point, who licks everything and drives me nuts. But anyhow, so my point is, I need to have the Cranston Police, if you're going to be going out whether it's 9:00 at night when the dog officer isn't, because usually she does certain hours, that they should distribute a piece of paper, which I was actually mailed from DEM that did explain what the law was. It talks about the general law. It says it's strictly confined at home. It does say my dog is a victim, but because he explained, I called the doctor because I wanted to know really the background. I asked the police officer, there were too many questions, I think. I didn't want to nail her anymore than she's saying. So he said, "If your dog bites another dog, it is then an attacker," even though he's protecting himself. It's just the oddest thing, the whole thing. But going through this process, I found that an invisible leash, which this man had for his dog, I said, "Clearly, it's invisible." I mean, I'm half Polish, I don't see, it's not working because it's on the dog. So my point is, I can't find out, number one, now these people, he's going to appeal for three dogs, is against the law apparently, we have to have a special permit. And so he's going to go for hearing. And I asked the police officer, I said, "Well, I'd like to go and say something because these dogs are running around, he's getting a third dog, and it's already bitten my dog. So I don't think he should have three dogs." And I won't even tell you how he acted towards me and how he's been going on, but I don't think someone like that should have another dog. How do I find out as a resident, one, if there's a hearing, can I go and talk about it? Two, can we, the police change the protocol that if I have another dog attack in a month from now, can I get a piece of paper similar to the one with the DEM that actually gives the law and says that you are prohibited from having your dog go off your property? Because I wouldn't know that. The first time, I didn't even get a sheet. Second time I'm getting it, it was kind of like, I should know. How would I know if you didn't tell me? So it would be just good to have it, you know, in the future, I don't know how I can work with you, but if I can do a letter, something. Thank you, that was it.
Good, thank you, Suzanne. Director Pearl, would you mind looking into that just to see, I don't know if there's just to see, uh, I don't know if there's any notices or anything. I know D E M regulations sometimes supersede, uh, city ordinances with regard to animals. Thank you. Director Librotary.
Librotary, Librotary, Cremonese. This is more informative, but it was, um, Paul Hominy, where the tennis courts are on Midwood Street, and the building there is known as the Priest House, after individual, the last name of priest. Behind that building, there are batting cages, fenced-in batting cages. What we in Parks and Recreation are gonna do, or have done, is to tear down those batting cages, if you build a steel structure with other proper permits. Uh, it'll be fifty by a hundred by twenty feet high. It'll house four batting cages and two pitches mounds and natural room plates. This will be at cost of anywhere between sixty-five and eighty thousand dollars. Those are just gulps. Uh, this will be at no cost whatsoever to the city of Cremonese. It'll be used by Chrysler News Baseball, American Legion, uh, senior league and junior American agent, if you will. Um, as soon as the company has all its permits in, in hand, uh, we're gonna start tearing down the batting cages. This isn't something that I feel, and I'm not a member of the council, but I don't feel that I need permission to do something as to improve a recreation facility, that I did want you aware, if you started getting phone calls from your constituents. Home money again is being donated for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I think we're all set with that. Yes, sir. Finally, right? Good evening again.
Robert Wilson, one fourteen May file address. I spoke before this council on February twenty-fifth. I mean, you know the status of the matters that at that time were being heard before municipal court as it relates to Yard Works. Those matters were a citation for three trailers that run the property, um, that the Safety Services Committee voted to not extend the license and they need to be removed, as well as utility sheds. And then there was another citation for floatables and floodway. This matter was heard before court, uh, on March fourteenth. On March thirteenth, uh, the matter is still being investigated by the head building official. And on March thirteenth, I had to receive a email from, uh, the Director of the Administration, Perillo, telling me that, um, Mr. Pike inspected today and found them yard works, uh, in compliance, unsaid violations, dash floatables secured, trailers removed, some storage units permitted, others not, required based on size. So then, I received that email on March thirteenth at six oh seven P M. The next morning, we were doing municipal court. I spoke before Judge Smith. The star witness, so to speak, in the case, Mr. Pike, called out sick. So, Mr. Pike was unable to give his testimony as to how these matters came into compliance. And we believe, as the Edgewood Heights Neighborhood Association, that these matters are not in compliance. The only matter that they complied with was they removed a few trailers, only after our insistence, because Mr. Pike was gonna allow them to keep those trailers on the property, even after you guys voted to have them go in and be given an extension of the license. And once we say the property, it means those trails were then removed. However, these other matters, as far as the utility sheds, I've, I've forwarded copies to every single member on this council today with pictures of those sheds, as well as the agenda that we presented to Mayor Fung, um, on March the sixth. Um, the utility sheds are still there. They haven't come into compliance as far as we're concerned. And the floatables haven't been anchored down, as they said that they were going to do in court. They presented a document showing that they had engineered drawings to anchor down these floatables. However, they haven't been anchored down, to our knowledge. So, then we tried to request, uh, maybe it's a, um, you get the term as you want, access to Public Records Act. We filed out a request with Mr. Lawson ten days ago. Mr., I filed up with Mr. Lawson today to get the status on that request. He told me we needed twenty additional days. So, apparently, they're still trying to figure things out on how these matters were, were into compliance. And continuing, but however, I must say, the main issue at this Yard Works site, and I just want to point out one thing, you guys mentioned about earlier, about bringing on something to notify neighbors from two-hundred feet to five-hundred feet or a mile, or whatever ends up being. That's all well and good, and I think it's a good idea. As so long as the company, uh, business that's moving in is truthful, in two thousand and four, when Yard Works moved into this site at three zero one Warwick Avenue, they said that they were going to be a nursery. They're no more nursery than that plane right there is red in color. They're a construction operation, is what they are, heavy construction operation. And what they're doing at that site is dumping and processing and recycling and sifting materials all day long, day in and day out. And that use is not permitted in a C-five zone property nor is it permitted under the designation of a contracted yard, which is what the current zoning certificate states, which was approved five days prior to the safety services meeting that we had back here on this, uh, before the February. I've been working with Mr. Perillo to bring in a zoning expert, so that they can address our substantiated claims that we presented to the mayor, Mr. Perillo, Mr. Iglesias, and Mr. Lawson, so we can get this bill filing once and for all. Because on March fifteenth, one day after this matter was heard in municipal court, and a case dismissed for them being in compliance, because Mr. Pike told Mr. Iglesias they're in compliance, and then he's not there in court the next day because he's out sick. Now, the questions I would have liked to have asked is to hire him in compliance, but I didn't get that opportunity. That was unfortunate. So, the very next day, on March fifteenth, Yard Works now officially has begun their operations. And so, now we're left to deal with the processing and the dumping and the recycling. And I'm urging the administration, um, to bring in this zoning expert, so that we can have him go down to the site, investigate what's going on there, look at the agenda that we presented, it's thirteen pages in nature, and make a decision as to whether or not what they're doing down there is allowable or not allowable. We believe that it's not allowable, and the law says so as well. But for whatever reason, we can't get people down there, the city, to do its job and get this matter dealt with and addressed. I appreciate the effort Mr. Perillo has made. He's sort of worked hard from Mr. Lopez, I will tell you that. Mr. Lopez was not willing to work with us when I wrote up. He was very rude about it, in fact. Mr. Perillo, I find not to be that way. In fact, I find him to be a man of his word. Every time he told me he was gonna do something, he's done it. But we need to sort of move along in this matter as it relates to getting a zoning expert brought in. Because don't forget, Stephen Marcella, who's one of the solicitors for the city, who is the so-called expert for the city, had to accuse himself in this matter because he has some sort, sort of relationship with the owners of Yard Works. So, we shouldn't have to suffer as a, as the Edgewood Heights Neighborhood Association, because now we lose that, that expertise as a zoning expert. We shouldn't have to suffer because he recused himself. The city needs to bring somebody in to do this job. And I've been requesting this since May of last year, and we're almost in May of this year. So, I just want to know when my son's not gonna have to run inside the house every single time a tailgate slams in our backyard, or when I'm gonna be able to stop breathing and diesel fuel smells, or when I'm gonna be able to start having to deal with processing and dumping and sifting all day long, day in and day out, Monday through Saturday. I just want to know when it's gonna stop. They've had three different zoning certificates there. First, they were a nursery, which they never were a nursery. That was the, that was the way to get their foot in the door. The next move was, is that they were storing materials and vehicles. And now they're contracted yards. So, there've been three different things in fifteen-plus years. So, and what they're doing down there is not allowable, and I would like to have it enforced. And I just want to know when it's gonna get enforced. I just want to make sure I haven't forgotten anything that's sitting here a while. So, I just want to make sure, if you want to wrap up. Thank you. I appreciate it. But I'll be coming here every single month to speak before this council until this matter is dealt with. And I had other things to do in my time, I can assure you. But this needs to get dealt with. We have had it as a neighborhood. I don't know what else we have to do to get this dealt with. They're out of compliance. They cannot process, dump, recycle, and sift at this facility. It's not allowed. It's right on top of our homes and our backyards. It's a C-five zone. It's a contracted yard. They can't deal with the processing, dumping, sifting, and recycling. End of story. We need to get somebody in there to enforce it. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Hi, Renee Patron, true Cassandra Court. I just want to thank Ed Brady for helping with the legislation. It really meant a lot to us to get that done. And I wanted to thank everyone that was involved and for you guys to give us this support is really important to us. Um, but there is something that we're still a little bit concerned with, and it's the noise at night. And we don't know who we can call when we're having a problem. The other night, they were up to eighty decibels. It's just like a plane, like we say, flying overhead over your house, and it just doesn't stop during the day. Some on, some off. They don't always run. We, we're not home as often during the day. So, at night, when you go to go to bed, that's when you notice. And it's loud and it's annoying. And for our situation is, when the noise ordinance is being broken, who do we call? And who's gonna come when they're loud? They can't come like several days later. So, it is still a concern as to how we go about handling it and what we do now that they're there, because the legislation's great for the future, but it doesn't really assist us at this point. And we're just trying to make heads or tails of this mess. Um, but we do appreciate that you let us come here and talk and say our piece, because a lot of other communities are not allowing that right now. So, again, I want to thank you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Uh, good evening. Douglas Doe, one seventy, Lipper Avenue. I'm happy I had a chance to read my email this afternoon, took a look at the photographs. Gives you an idea what we've been dealing with out in our neighborhood. Um, I've been told that the developers are on a deadline to get the encroachment process done by the end of the month, partly because that National Grid and the developers screwed up the design process on late night road, much to their surprise. Um, it's basically been a bucket truck blitzkrieg. We've had days where we had six or seven bucket trucks lined up on Lipper Ave, our door road, Hope Road, multiple police details, blocking traffic, delaying trash pickups, delaying older, racing my neighbor for three days, because the older truck driver wouldn't go down the road with so many trucks blocking his, his path. Uh, we've had damage to our property, um, driving over our lines. Uh, National Grid sent us a letter saying that we were doing this. No problem as it arrived after construction already started, so that was useless. Uh, we never heard from the developer. My neighbors now have that mini substation in the air and in their driveways. No one's explained to us what that is. I hope to hear back sometime this week from the building inspector, so we get some idea what they've installed. Whether it wasn't put on the actual site property is a mystery. There's no reason they couldn't have done it. It's that they didn't want to, um, which is part of the course. Um, as far, I hope to hear back from the planning commission tonight about where we are in the moratorium and the new ordinance and the new cop, uh, comprehensive plan amendment. Um, it's my understanding the judge, I mean, the city was sued by the Fitzgerald, so the developer. Apparently, the judge is supposed to give her an opinion tomorrow afternoon. Um, I've had a chance to read the city's response. It was prepared by outside council that I hired. I appreciate their very robust defense of the moratorium and the reasons for it. We need more of that. And I hope you folks have a chance to go out to Hope Road, take a ride down Lipper Ave, pull on the door road, see what's out there. I need to ride out late night, so we can see what's there now. And we went to that nice stretch of roadway where they couldn't do anything, because all those trees are in conservation land. And this council is misled by the developer, the National Grid, and city officials that you could authorize the destruction of those ninety trees, when that was never the case. Because they had no idea the width of the right of way until somebody finally went out there and did it. And we realized all those trees were in conservation land. They were off limits. So, at least we saw about nineteen hundred feet of the roadways out there. But Hope Road was processed and being butchered this afternoon. Um, the destruction is pretty emblematic of what's been happening to Western Cranston out there, and why this moratorium was so necessary. And I hope you could have stopped this entire process in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Anyone else?
Name a address for the record. My name is Rick Spencer, Freddie Roberts Circle. And I just want to say thank you for hearing us and thank you for all your excellent work together. Bipartisanship is a wonderful thing. I will make it simple. I live in the Edgewood Heights neighborhood, and our neighborhood is under assault. It has been under attack for twelve years. Noise, dirt, pollution, and heavy, heavy construction rumbling from seven o'clock in the morning until five o'clock in the afternoon, Monday through Saturday, for twelve years. And I would ask that each one of you think about how it would feel in your backyard to be subject to this degradation, pollution, and noise. It's terrible. So, I just wanted to add another face to this discussion, so that you understand. Mr. Wilson and all of our neighbors are working very hard to preserve a neighborhood we love very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Jessica Moreno of Natick Avenue, Cranston. Um, I came up tonight to speak on the issue of the solar farm and the devastation that, that it's already presenting on the environment. But I feel compelled to speak also to the issue of the Yard Works. Um, I find it just repugnant, appalling, and disgusting, that these poor people are constantly begging the city to do its job. And to hear what happened at the last hearing is disgraceful, beyond disgraceful. And these poor people should not have to keep resurrecting this issue. With respect to the issue of the solar farms, while my property is not legal abut to the proposed Natick Solar Farm, nor is my property abutting the Lipper Avenue and Hope Solar Farm project, I think it's imperative that the council know that, um, in recent months, since I think it was February or January, but we are keeping a photo journal of this and now probably video log as well, um, we are seeing, like we, something we have never seen in seventeen years, our entire family. There is large, large amounts of sediment that pours down from the stream into our pond and continues onward. Whenever there is a heavy rainfall, or for example, with the previous snowfall accumulations and the, and the melting of it, um, after that levels off, then the water goes back to not being this brownish, uh, cloudyish, uh, cloud, uh, cloudish sediment, um, to being more clear again. But it's at the point, because it already happens for much of the last couple of months, that you can actually see, when you go over to the pond, you can see the, the silt, the sediment. Um, this is causing devastation. I am not an environmental expert, but that's how, um, concerning it is to us and my whole family. Um, it's at the point where, um, my, my, you know, teenage son and my younger son will look out in the morning, "Oh, my God, Mom, look." My husband says it in the morning as well, when it's with the heavy rains. Um, it's affecting the wildlife. Um, they will not, uh, the ducks will not swim in it. They don't have normal behavior in terms of feeding. There's a certain pattern, uh, which I won't bore you with. And again, we're not environmental experts. We're just laypeople. They've lived, lived it for seventeen years and made certain observations of what things should be like, and it's confirmed. I have reached out to D E M because there are rules in place. Things need to be followed. I'm not saying anyone's doing anything intentionally. Um, but whatever's going on needs to be corrected, and I'm not gonna sit silently by and let this happen. Um, and let me add, you may say to yourself, "Well, how do you know that's where it's coming from?" Well, because Mother Nature has its own simple path. And we took it upon ourselves to follow the course of the stream. Um, the water flows from the Hope Solar Farm area through the Cranston Country Club, then it traverses across their property underneath the road to a bridge across Rossi's property, then the Franciscos, then ours, and then across under Natick Avenue to Moses and, uh, and Drake Patton's property and onward eventually into the Patuxet. Um, when you go up as far as you can legally see the water pattern, it is muddy, like through all Cranston Country Club, under the road. Um, so, it's pretty evident that that's, that's the, uh, the source of it. So, I want you to be aware of it, and, um, any assistance that the administration, um, that the city council members can assist in this regard would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, that portion of the meeting is closed. Next, we have election of city officials. Director Perillo. All right. Yeah, we have, on the agenda, we had a charter review, commission appointments, but since Council President Frina's not here, I'm gonna, uh, pass that off to the next council meeting. Um, report of city officers. Any, uh, police fire or administrative Any police fire or administrative issues? You have a report of hiring a special counsel under executive communications, and you can take a look at that. Then we have a request to be placed on pension role, Assistant Chief Bernard Patner of the Cranston Fire Department. Director.
Assistant Chief Patner has provided the city of Cranston thirty-nine years of service in the Cranston Fire Department. He has recently been selected to take over the East Greenwich Fire Department, retiring at the end of the month. So he has asked to be placed on the pension role for his thirty-nine years of service to the residents of Cranston.
Okay. Thank you. Entertaining a motion. Motion approved. The motion is second under discussion. Councilman Peploskis.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to wish Chief Patner well. He's been an excellent deputy chief here in Cranston. He is who I like to call the master of grants. He's getting us numerous fire trucks and we are no cost and other equipment. He's a great person. He's been a great servant of our city. I truly wish him well, and it's East Greenwich's, it's their gain and it's our loss. So he will be missed, and I wish him well.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else on the council? I'd also like to echo what Councilman Peploskis said. Deputy Chief Patner's been here throughout every budget cycle that I've been on, and we're going to miss him in this one because he's usually got a lot of facts and figures with regard to grants and how we can pay for things and how we can get new fire trucks or new apparatus of any kind. So it's kind of sad that we have to do this. I thought he was going to stay in service. I know he's so used to that, but I wish him well. Any other discussion on Chief Patner's request? Hearing none. We have a motion in a second. Please take the roll.
Officer Stiglitz?
Yes.
Officer Hopkins?
Yes.
Officer Vargas?
Yes.
Officer Paulus?
Yes.
Officer Paulus?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Councilman Stikels?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the report. Yes, it's okay. What I'd like to ask for is a, we get these reports every month, and outside legal council fees are really a huge part of the budget. I think last year it was overspent by $700,000 that we had to take from other areas. And a lot of these cases, I don't have the faintest idea what they're about, and I wondered if the administration would prepare for the council a report on summarizing each case. And I'm not asking for our legal strategy or anything that would be confidential. What I'm asking for is an explanation that such and such a case involves, you know, a lieutenant in the police department suing the city for discrimination, and it's at a certain level in the court system. Because I think we need to know about these things and know what's happening with them. So I'd like to make that a request.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the solicitors to take a look at that as far as what we can disclose and what we can't disclose. I think we could disclose a lot more in executive session than we can in open forum. I think we have to be careful. I know, you know, it's a summary, it's a brief explanation, but it can be very dangerous with regard to pending litigation. So, you know, if you want to have some really intense discussions, I think we could do it in an executive session. Yes, Councilman?
I do not want on this list anything that is not available in the public record. I think we could all go down to the courthouse and get the complaints and various information. That's all. All I'm asking for is stuff that's already in the public record. As far as the executive session, I think that might be a second step if, after receiving this summary, members wanted to learn more about certain cases. That would help us narrow it down, and then that might be an appropriate setting for an appropriate agenda for an executive session.
I would suggest that the director, you know, maybe the solicitor or other solicitors get involved in that. I'm of the opinion that even the discussion of fees and costs creates an unfair advantage to litigants. It's part of what we're, you know, I'm not so sure that we should discuss even on those issues in a public forum until the cases are settled or resolved by the courts, but I certainly think it's something we should address.
I'll go speak to the solicitor also and get his opinion on that and see how much information we eat or willing to divulge.
Okay. Thank you, Director. Okay. Next, on our council president communications, since the council president isn't here, I think we move the. Thank you. Joined along pretty good with Adam, but we'll continue. We next have council member communications. Councilman Hopkins.
If I may. If I may ask my fellow council members, only because I have one quick thing, and I don't want to tie up the director and all the director, Liberator, he's been nice enough to stay here for my question. I wonder if my fellow members would allow me to go just on this one topic first.
Yes, council members Hopkins and Stikels will be free. They both agree to the election team to take you out of order.
I do appreciate it, and again, I'll defer to the other topic I'll weigh down. It's the, my discussion is the condition of the walking tracks. And being on the one member, the council that's on the Park and Rec Committee, I was able to have a conversation with Director Liberator, and if he could just bring us up to date.
I'm sure what's in question is Doric Avenue.
Doric Avenue and also Park View, sir.
Doric Avenue should be shut down as a safety issue. That being said, we're probably going to shut it down soon because we're going to do some reconstruction. All the trees behind the basketball courts is about eight of them. All the roots from those trees grew across the walking path, tripping hazards. I'm talking some three inches high, four inches high. When they're jogging or walking, skateboarding, which is now, but they still do it. If I'm not mistaken, it may be also paying right now against the city because of that truck. The asphalt plant's going to open up till the first week or beginning of the second week in April. What we can start doing is cutting out the areas that are all hazard, take down the trees that need to be removed, and as the plant opens up, just go in and put the binder cord in and finish coat.
If I may, Director. So can we put signage or something in the effect that this is no longer a safe place to do your walking?
That is one of the toughest places to close down thoroughly because you got Doric Avenue, you got Off the Street, you got Woodbine, and there's so many different ways for people to get in. Cautionate doesn't stop people. Construction does.
Right. My only concern is if we had something in place, and I defer to the administration on this, just to protect us from any further litigation, to say that this is not a safe exercise area.
We could get some signage put up.
That would.
It won't stop everyone.
I agree, but I do appreciate the.
I've already got estimates. I will talk to the purchase agent tomorrow and Mr. Strong to see if we can do this with a bid waiver as an emergency situation to process it quickly.
I appreciate it.
Are you going to be writing your check for the amount?
I will. I will work diligently hand in hand with you to get this accomplished. I also wanted to commend your department for the recent completion of the Eden Park Playground. It was done with, it's eco-friendly also, you kept that tree in place, it's handicap accessible, and I just wanted to commend you and the staff for just a superb job. Tony, thank you.
Thank you, folks. Just to follow up, yeah, Councilman, I do, we will be putting some signage up there and getting the word out through our social media, Facebook, Twitter, so forth, the website. There is liability there. We don't want anyone else to get hurt. There was an active claim right now at Doric, so we'll do the best we can with signage, obviously. People are going to sneak on and try to utilize it, but I think if the signage is there, we've taken care of our responsibility to the residents by putting that up.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Dagan.
I guess, Director, while you're still up, are there similar concerns at any of the other parks, specifically in?
Well, we know Bay, we just reeded the Pennant Truck. And we learned it three years ago, four years ago. Bridge Mattington is in good shape. JP Complex breaks, that's in good shape. I would say Park View and Doric are the ones we have to pay attention to.
Director, Director Liberator, how, do you think you need to shut it down right away?
When I talk to Mr. Strong and Mr. Marquez tomorrow, if we can do an emergency bid waiver, if we start taking it up right away, people will not be able to get on the line.
Thank you. Councilman Vargas.
Thank you, Council President. Director, thank you for staying here this late this evening. I did have a quick question while I have you here. Any update on the grant as to how that's going on the tennis courts on Baby Avenue?
I've already got, I've already got a price for the fence, huh?
Okay.
And I'll be going out, Mr. Marquez is going to put a ad in the paper, we have to go out for bid on that.
Okay.
But it is moving forward. And Kim, Lisa Kirshenbaum has written a grant, we get some of them moved into the four all closed.
For the tennis court as well?
That's correct.
Okay. And if you don't mind, I can ask you one more question, Director. The basketball on Commercial Street, there's also, it's also risen, so it's like you can also kind of just, you can't really play basketball, there's a lot of cracks in there. Is there any?
Cracks again from that huge strip. We need to stop putting trees in new locations. We're building, no trees, but we will do something about the one Commercial Street. A complete repaid job now. Get rid of the cracks and repaid this.
Okay. I think one of the lights may be out as well, if there's, from what I was.
Ever be building maintenance.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Podcast.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I think Director Strong wants to weigh in on the original issue.
Tony, you mentioned about a bid waiver as an emergency, which we have done in the past. Do you have any idea what the dollar figure is? Sure. Because that's thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Thirty-four thousand nine hundred. And that would come out of what? It'd have to come out of one of my bonds. All right. Forty-eight, you can come in. How do you go there? It'd have to come out of one of my bonds. Okay. All right. All right. Councilman Gray, is this on the same issue?
I just wanted to commend, Tony, Mr. Liberator, Councilman Hopkins and I attended a community meeting about the proposal for the new track complex at the football field, and it was very informative and gave the community a lot of great answers, so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Director. Councilman McCollum, you want to defer on the other issues? Okay, we'll go back to Councilman Hopkins. You're up first.
Thank you, Jim. What I'm looking for at this point, and again, we've got a business in our city that is very, very prosperous, they've hired a lot of people, they do a yeoman's job, but unfortunately, what we're getting in the neighborhood where they're located is a lot of complaints about the size of the mulch piles, the size of the wood piles, the noise, constant noise from the grinding of the machines. And I just wanted to follow up with the administration to see if they've come up with any answers. The neighbors in that area are irate, to say the least, especially when the wind blows and the mulch ends up all over their property. They can smell it, they can taste it, it's in their pools, it's in their house. And again, this is a good business, but it's for the city, but it's also a tough issue for the neighborhood. And I'm trying to work on some type of mutual concern here so that we can get this problem rectified because the mulch piles are huge, over the size of the houses. There's some dying process that must be going on because of the colors of the mulch. I think that the trees are dangerous where they're stacked. But the noise, I even had one of the neighbors send me a video of the window in the house shaking when the mulch machine is grinding. And I got a call this week as a follow-up from somebody on Collisle Street in Garden City that said that they were ready to sell their house because here we go again with the grinding noise. And again, they're a great business, I just have a concern about where they're located and the effect that it's having on the neighborhood, and I'm getting the calls on it. So with that, I'm looking for the administration as a follow-up.
Director Pearl?
Councilman, like the yard works, it's a balancing act. We're trying to make the neighbors happy that they're there and want the businesses to be prosperous, so it's definitely a balancing act. And looking at Northeast Tree, their zoning certificate, they've been there since 2005. They were approved in an A8 zone, in a residential area. They were approved there in 2005. A little bit of history, and Dr. Slawp has done a lot of research on it, has Director Pico. Their operation, as is, I think is getting larger. And the last time it got lodged like this was 2012, and that's when Director Pico took them to municipal court because they were set for being outside of their zoning. And at that hearing, the city lost that case, and municipal court said that they are within their zoning and they can't continue to operate as they are. Nothing has changed, to my knowledge, since that 2012 decision. So what we're trying to do now is to see if that manufacturing or that business itself has risen to a next level where now it possibly may be outside of the parameters of their zoning. Again, why it's in A residential, I don't know how it was first approved in 2005, but we are currently looking at the majority of their operations, again, they say, like Yarrock says and Northeast Tree says, they're obverse, they have nursery name licenses, they believe they're operating within their zoning, within authority of the state law. So I think our issue right now is, again, trying to weigh the needs of the neighborhood versus the rights of the business owner to operate his business, and that's ongoing. I don't have much more for you than that right now, I'm sorry.
Again, I think you may have hit a point here where the size of the business has grown so much, and again, all the research that I've been doing, I can't find anything that gave them permission to do what they're doing. But that being the case, if you're saying that they have a permit to grind the mulch in that A8 zone, I've got a concern with that and where it came from. in that A8 zone, uh, I've got a concern with that and where it came from. Because the houses are literally rattling and the smell right behind it. In fact, there was a fire up there a couple of years ago and the entire back fence of the people's yards melted. And it's a dangerous situation and obviously it's an inconvenience to those neighbors, especially with the smell. If you go up and walk the neighborhood and stay there for any length of time, you will literally inhale the fumes from the mulch.
Just, you know, I want to show regarding the dying that you mentioned. Dr. Salapus did get some information from them that none of that dying is toxic. That the color and that they do to the wood product, it's non-toxic. That, so that's not a concern regarding the dying of the wood chips or the mulch, if you want to say. We reached out to them. They've been very receptive. Um, they've told us that let us know what we need to do and we'll try to make everyone happy. And I told them, I don't know if that's possible. Just like, I don't know if it's possible to make the Yardworks neighborhood happy. But again, we're in the business of promoting business and making neighbors happy. So we're trying to find that balance. We want to make neighbors be happy with their, with their neighborhoods, with their homes, but not at the expense of putting businesses out of business. So that's, again, that's a balancing act that we're trying to do more research on. We can't take any move against anyone without the authority to do so.
Is there the counterbalance, Director, is the fact that we also have people that live in those houses that are being affected by the business? So the balancing act is are those people going to sell their houses and leave? Or are they going to devalue their property as a result of living next to it? I know I couldn't live there. I couldn't live there. I've been in the houses. I've seen the backyards where their pools are covered with mulch, the roofs are covered with mulch. And again, the noise is, it's just a constant grinding. It really affects that neighborhood.
I sympathize with the neighbors, but the city.
Have the neighbors met with the business? Have they, I know they did meet on the building of the tower on that property.
I don't know if they've met recently regarding a recent concern, but I know Northeast Tree has said they're willing to meet with anyone regarding the issues that the neighbors are having. And again, I sympathize with the neighbors, but in order for the city to do anything, and they've been here for the last fifteen years, I need to have some, a document, a law, a zoning, a statute, something to make, to help me enact something. And that's what we're researching now. Is there anything out there to say that Northeast Tree cannot operate their business as they are currently operating? That's what I, that's what we need.
They get a permit to do this mulching operation? They have a permit?
They're under the same zoning certificate since 2005. Nothing, their zoning certificate hasn't changed since 2005. So their operation is the same. And again, is it exponentially bigger than 2005? I would say so. But again, when we challenged it in 2012, we lost in court. So I don't know if anything would change now if we went that same route and just questioned the zoning without any other evidence to back up the city's position.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Stike. Uh, I'd like to second what Councilman Hopkins said. I think the situation there is horrible. And I think one question that I would have is, and this goes, actually extends to the Yardworks question also, is getting an expert in here to, for the city who can give us some advice on, on these issues. Because I think at this point, Mr. Pyko doesn't have a lot of credibility with the neighbors. And the Northeast Tree operation is very, I mean, everything you said is, is true, from what I know. I'm not questioning what you're saying, but I think the way that that zoning certificate was granted, if you go back and look at the file, the first response of a building inspector was denial. And he denied what they wanted to do there. And then somehow, that changed. So one question I have is when you have, as a city, a building inspector make a decision that is wrong, what legal authority do you have to reverse that decision? And I think we need somebody in here who, who knows this, this stuff to, to give us some advice on this and, and address, I know we're on the yard work subject, I mean, on the Northeast Tree issue. But that's just, I mean, the pile is amazing. I mean, it's, it's taller than, I think it's like a three or four story house at times. It's monstrous. And as Ken said, that grinder just goes on and on and on. And frankly, the neighbors, if you talk to some of them, as I have, they say, and I don't know if this is true, but they say that there have been physical threats by the owners of that, that business against them. And many of the neighbors don't complain because the owners of Northeast Tree are the landlords of where they're renting their houses. They own those houses. So it's a very bad situation. I think Ken also pointed out the stacking of the lumber, which I would, if you haven't been back there, I would urge you to go back there. I went back there about a month on A Street. And, I mean, a kid could be in the backyard of one of those houses and one of those logs could fall down. And there's no way that there's any zoning certificate that protects that kind of danger to the community. They're stacked parallel to the fence so that they could just roll right down the pile, right over the fence and whammo. So I think that needs to be looked at. But I think we need someone, when I went to, I went in to look at the record on Northeast Tree. And I, this was fairly recently, and Stan Pyko happened to be at the desk. And I said, well, I'd like to see the file on Northeast Tree. And he said, they're protected by the Freedom of Farm Act. And I looked at him and I said, hasn't anyone talked to you? And apparently not. No one from the administration. I believe this was, it was before you came on as the Director of Administration. No one from the administration had explained to him that, no, you can't, Freedom of Farm Act does not cover grinding up logs at a, a tree company. So I hope that's clear now to everyone in the administration. But it, it needs to be certainly clear to Mr., Mr. Pyko, that it is, they're not covered by that. And to hear that from anyone in the administration at this point is, I don't know, I can't think of a word that describes it.
Well, I can respond to you, Councilman. We are trying to approach this on a couple of different fronts. I think Northeast Tree, Yardworks, and a couple of other businesses are all going to fall into the same category. So we are doing our due diligence, research-wise. Stan is speaking to BEM. We're trying to get a better interpretation of what the Freedom of Farm Act is and all the other information that we're getting based on their zoning and their certificates. We have reached out to get outside zoning official. We're waiting to hear back from two people right now. And hopefully we're hiring a new building official tomorrow. So I think a new set of eyes is the best way to handle probably all of these situations. Someone who doesn't have any preconceived notions, someone who comes in fresh, can look at it and say, okay, this is good, this is bad. So I think between a new building official, an outside person, and our investigation, and reaching out to a D E M to see how this, these operations should be zoned, I think on those three fronts is where we're trying to move forward to.
Is Mr. Pyko resigning or what?
No, he's the alternate building official. He's only been acting, he's only been acting building official. He's a physician. He's been vacant for quite some time.
So you're hiring someone who will be?
His boss.
His boss?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing, point I would make about the dyes is, I'd like some more information about the dyes. Just Robin said saying that they're fine.
It's not from, it's not from Director Mcine.
All right. But what do we have about what the ingredients are that are being used and?
We're still waiting.
I have a, sort of a fact sheet.
Oh, great, okay, thank you. Can I, oh, okay. Well, I was going to move on to Yardworks if people were done with Northeast Tree.
That's fine. I mean, it's all kind of the same thing. So if you, Councilman Brady, did you want to add something on? Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, I appreciate, obviously the concerns of the neighborhoods are very important. But I also, you know, I know this is a complex issue, as Councilman Hopkins said, because, you know, they do employ two hundred plus people, and a lot of them are residents. And they've been very responsive with any issues that I've had, whether a tree has fallen on a, a track in the city of Princeton. They've moved it almost instantaneously in storms. They've been very responsive. So it is a very complex issue. I appreciate the administration looking to it. I do agree with both my fellow councilmen that I hope an outside expert can be hired to look into this further. But I also did want to go and say that I appreciate the business that they've done throughout the city of Princeton.
Okay. Councilman Stikers, you have still up on this? Okay. Could, could, just for, I think I, I know the answer to this question, but just so that everyone else does. Can you tell the council what happened with the, the, the notice of violations concerning the trailers and the floatables?
Sure.
All right.
Stan Pyko did go to Yardworks on the thirteenth to verify that they had addressed the removal of the three trailers, which they had, securing the floatables, which he said they did do. And regarding the storage sheds, there were three that had been permitted. So that was nine hundred dollars for the permits for three of the sheds. And three or four others were under a hundred and twenty square feet, which according to Stan does not have to be permitted under the building code. So they went to court the fourteenth. Obviously, he testified to Judge Smith that they did, beyond compliance with those certificates, with those violations. So they were cited, I believe it was a hundred and twenty dollars in court costs and a hundred dollar donation to the library fund, and those charges were dismissed. I did reach out to Wyatt Broshu, who is Yardworks attorney last week, and told him I hope he didn't think that was the end of us. Because Mr. Wilson and company had given us that document that you guys have. And I addressed those concerns with Mr. Broshu and told him that Mr. Pyko and company will be inspecting them again for these violations. So if they would like to get a jump on things and start cleaning up their processing in their works, then they should do that. And what the only disagreement at this point I think we have is that processing of materials. Mr. Pyko believes that the contractor designation allows them to process the materials. So that's basically what the expert, a new building, building official would either say, yes, I agree, and no, it's not. And then that's a whole different conversation at that point.
Okay. And you said there was the, the sheds, that they paid three hundred dollars for permits and those temporary structure permits?
Nine, yeah, nine hundred. There's three for three hundred dollars each, possibly. I know it was nine hundred dollars they paid for a temporary permit, six month temporary permits.
All right. So they have to be approved by the Safety Services Committee?
The storage containers and that, trailers, the storage containers.
Temporary structure permits have to be approved by the Safety Services Committee?
Okay. That's, that's, I didn't know that. Stan gave them permits for the three smaller. Again, I want trailers as storage containers. So you're saying that's the?
I, I think you need to look at that because I, if you want to set up a pop-up tent, that's a temporary structure.
I think we want to see the services for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I'm not, I mean, the Patuxa Village Farmers Market, every year comes in for a temporary structure permit.
Okay.
So he doesn't have the authority to grant those permits. May I, may I interject? I just want to suggest maybe we should have the Solicitors Office look into this, give us some legal opinions, because obviously, we need to see what authority a building inspector has and what decisions he can make as opposed to whether our solicitors should give us a legal opinion on these things. And perhaps they can look into whether we need any legislation up at the State House to help us with some of these issues because we're running out of time. So if we get our House and Senate reps in that, in our area to, if we need them, we can have them available, I think. But they're going to have to, they would have to submit something very soon. So I think we need, we need some answers, some legal opinions on this, some of this stuff. I think this is, as Councilman Stikers has said in the past, it's above Mr. Pyko's pay grade, I think, to make some of these decisions and we probably need some better opinions to help us. So perhaps we can meet on this. I hate to add more meetings, especially with the budget session coming, but, you know, we needed an executive session as well. Councilman Stikers, you had? Yeah, just, the clerk just handed me the, the code and the definition of temporary structure, which is five point seven six point zero one zero. Five point seven six point zero one zero. Temporary structure means any building or part thereof, tent, trailer, motor vehicle, enclosure, or structure which is not permanently affixed to the land. So I think it's, it's, then it describes the process and then you have to go to the Safety Services Committee in the sections after that. The other thing I just wanted to say is I think the, the fact that, well, two things. One is that I think the fact that they escaped with a hundred dollar fine and court costs is outrageous. This is, I don't know if the funk administration wants to be known as the pro violation of the law administration, but that's what's going on here. They were given a notice in June that they were in violation. There's, the fines should have occurred thirty days following, following that notification in June. They went through July, August, September, October, November, December, January, February, part of March. All that time, they knew they had to remove those structures. And they got fined a hundred dollars? That's an embarrassment. So I, I have a couple of, at the end of the agenda tonight, I have a couple of ordinances. I think that the, the court and the administration needs some guidance from this council about what happens when you ignore a notice of violation. I think, and I won't get into all the details of that, but I just, I want to talk about that some more in the future. The last thing on this yard work situation is, this is not fair to businesses, this situation. If, what a business needs from a city is they need to know what the rules are. And the rule, and the rules shouldn't change. And if I was Yardworks and I had gotten a letter like they did in 2009 saying cease and desist, you have illegal structures on your property in 2009, from Stan Pyko, and then nothing happened. Nothing happened. No, nobody was fined, nobody went to court, it was just disappeared into thin air. And then I got a notice ten years later that those same structures were a violation of the law. My reaction as Yardworks would be, what on earth is going on here? This is nuts. Right? They need, they need, a business needs consistency. And I certainly hope this new person, whoever he or she is, enforces the law fairly by the law, not by, hey, you got a shed, I'll give you a temporary structure permit. We have a building inspector who doesn't know that a temporary structure permit has to go to the Safety Services Committee? He's been there for how many years as the building inspector? Every year I've been on the council. Nine years, 10 years, 12 years. And he just had a court case where the Iglesias, he told him he had to go to, told Yardworks that he had to go to the city council for a temporary structure permit, and the city council voted down the temporary structure permit, and then he gives him three more temporary structure permits. It's unbelievable. Unbelievable. All right. Enough on Yardworks.
See if you may just stand up.
Oh, sure.
I certainly can understand Councilman Styches' frustration, Director Perillo, I think you from my conversations regarding this matter, what the residents have said. I definitely, definitely am, and I hope to see positive change in the very near future, because I, again, can understand that I was in my seat of this so upset. Just saying on that topic, prior to you being appointed, I had many complaints on non-vetitions, which is also obviously a missing parameter, and I'm unhappy with the response that they've been getting from Mr. Peichel. So if you could just continue to follow up with that and the conversation from our side, I would greatly appreciate it.
I will. Okay. Councilman Styches, you still?
The next thing is, I'd like a status report on the Planning Commission's progress on regulating solar facilities.
And just to add to that, Councilman Styches, our solicitor has some info on what's been going on at the State House on that issue as well.
Great.
Director Mazula?
Okay. My counsel speaking with the State House issue on that. So we've been researching ordinances at this point. We've not had any public hearings with any stakeholders at this point. Our timetable is to get this all finished sometime this summer. Have public hearings sometime late, midsummer, late summer, prior to the lifting of the moratorium. So that's where we are right now. Is there anything overshadowing, but we've been, we're in the research phase?
Exactly. The moratorium would expire when?
I think the moratorium expires late in October.
All right. So something would have to be drafted by, what, the August city council meeting?
It would be drafted well before then. So we intend to have public hearings over the next two or three months with the public to solicit input, and then the Plan Commission would work on draft, get that draft, you know, in place, and then find a sponsor from the city council, and then start the ordinance process. So again, the timeline is summertime, not into the fall.
Right.
But that's the timeline that we have.
Well, and one of my concerns is that we have something in place when the, and when I mean it, when I say in place, I mean either passed or rejected by the council, and either signed or vetoed by the mayor, whatever happens. But the process is done before the moratorium is over.
Yes, no question about that. But the timeline is such that it will be before the moratorium is over, if the moratorium survives a legal challenge. So that's, we're also trying to plan for that contingency at this point as well. So we're working with the state guidelines that have been developed over the past couple of years. We're using that as a, as guidance. We're also taking into account public comments that we've received over the past four years. We're looking at other communities' adopted ordinances. So it's a big, it's a big ordinance. So we're moving along with that.
Okay. Could you please keep the council abreast of the schedule, so we can tell our constituents, you know, when the hearings are?
The hearings before the council will probably be no sooner than July or August.
No, I mean the hearings before the Plan Commission, when you're soliciting.
Oh, yeah. Those will be publicized. Those are a secret. Those will be publicized. I wanted to comment on the issue about Hope Solar. We spoke about that last month. I've been working with the developers on the fencing issues, the bobbler issues. I don't want to, you know, be over optimistic, but we may have some resolution on those in the next couple of months. The soil erosion issue, which really erupted, and I think the public spoke about, the celtation, DEM is all over that. At this point, the DEM has sent the violation notice, and now that it's on DEM's radar, they're the ones who have the complete responsibility for enforcement. So the city doesn't have any jurisdiction for enforcement on weapons issues. That is the DEM, and the DEM is fully aware and fully engaged on solving that. So that should be, that should be resolving itself fairly soon. So, and the other issue was, of course, the moratorium that was, that's being challenged on its face. So whether or not that, with student scrutiny, remains to be seen. So we've been working with special counsel on that. Say, special counsel. Special counsel for that particular issue. And we're also working on the appeal for the Medick Solar Farm, going to the Plating Board. So we've had multiple different tracks of things that have been kind of splitting our time. So, but the ordinance itself is on target. We're putting resources on that.
Good. Thank you. Councilman Styches, Solicitor Verdeckia has some information as well on what's going on at the state level, so might be of interest. Just by way of information, about two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, there were several bills before the HEW Committee of the State House, Health, Education, and Welfare. Those hearings were nearly six hours. They were all solar bills. So I'm in the process of obtaining a full package of everything that was considered at that committee. Whether we make it through the committee, whether it ultimately ends up being passed is something else, but at least it can give us, I'll make copies for everyone, at least the council will have an idea, with regard to what's taking place at the state level. And legislature goes out of session mid-June, so if anything's going to be passed, it will preempt whatever's being done here. So I'll just, I'll keep tabs on that.
I just wanna comment on that. That's the solar siting legislation, and that basically mandates that all cities and towns have an ordinance that's consistent with this legislation. That shouldn't change all that much. It's fairly cooked at this point. It's taken, we're actually, the second cycle of working on it, because it died last year. This year, an interesting thing happened on the way to this bill, is that there's this housing density requirement that got tacked on to this bill to say that if a city or town does anything in a residential zone, like anything, like agriculture, or solar farm, or conservation, or anything like that, any kind of housing density that's lost, the bill is basically saying that you're mandated to find that density someplace else. So if we were to have a land conservation purchase of 200 acres, and there's, I don't know, 100 housing units that's part of that conservation, we're only to be mandated, if this bill passes, to find someplace to put those 100 units. It's like a forced transfer development rights scenario. That, that's, I have no idea how that's going to work. The legislation is not clear whatsoever. I'm drafting a letter to the Senate Chairman on that, where I'm expressing concern on that portion of the bill. But that's a very odd thing that got tacked on by the Rhode Island Builders Association, very late in the process. It really doesn't relate to anything about solar. It's just kind of stuck in there as, you're gonna replace this density somehow. So just FYI.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Does that have? Yeah, maybe. Mr. Verdeckia, you could also pass that information on to the Planning Department?
Sure.
You know, so that they, just in case they've missed something. I have this item on about, we heard a lot about tonight, about encouraging recycling, and just wondering if there's any update about using the tax letter to encourage recycling and promote other city programs to residents?
The mayor's just gonna do what he's done in the past, just the bottom line regarding recycling. He doesn't wanna put any additional stuff on the back of that note.
Why is that?
He just told me that he's not, he has no interest in doing that.
Okay. Well, I'm glad he's interested in recycling and environmental.
He's gonna put on the bottom of the note, as he does every year.
Yeah. He's gonna put on the line that says, and don't forget to recycle, or something like that, right?
I believe so.
Because he did that once before.
I believe so.
I just, I think that's inadequate. I think he has not the opportunity to encourage recycling in a real way, and not just sort of a meaningless sentence at the end of a letter about an entirely different subject. I'm disappointed. Please confer that to him.
I will.
The last item is, I raised with the, our grant writer and the administration that there are, this item says energy-efficient grant. That's actually not accurate. There are low-interest loans since the, through the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank for energy conservation steps by cities, and I was hoping that the city would be able to put together an application to make some of our buildings more efficient, energy-wise, both from an environmental standpoint, but also from a money-saving standpoint. Have we made any progress on that?
I did reach out to Director Kroupp, who did provide me Mr. Falrowski's email and study from December of '16. I did fill out that to Lisa Kerschenbaum, and unfortunately, I don't think we're gonna be able to make that April deadline that's in place. But I did fill out all the information. Again, we haven't decided as an administration which building we would try to utilize that for, or how much money it would be. We haven't really delved into the details yet. But I just, as I said, I just got the information from, from Director Kroupp regarding Mr. Falrowski's study.
Does the administration, does the administration support the idea of making the buildings more energy-efficient?
Yes.
Well, I guess if it's not gonna get put together by April 9th, I, again, would urge that you talk with the Infrastructure Bank about when the next round would be, and prepare ahead of time. I have one more item I just wanna mention briefly. There was an article in the Cranston Herald about the football facility at Cranston West. And in that article, it was stated that there was a $2 million bond referendum for parks and recreation projects in November, which is accurate. And that, and this is a quote from Mr. De Mayo, "That referendum passed, and of that money, $600,000 was allotted for this project." That's not an accurate statement. While people may want $600,000 from that $2 million bond to go to one project or another, there was nothing on the ballot about where that money was gonna go, except generally to approve parks. And I just wanna say to everyone here, that that's our decision, along with the mayor, how we spend bond money. If we wanna spend it at Cranston West, that's our decision. But that kind of statement makes me very nervous, because as the school, as we all know, the school department has a long list of projects that they want done. And, you know, there's only so much money to go around. This isn't, there isn't a pile of $2 million of money that we can use. It's a $2 million of borrowing authority, and whenever we borrow, we pay interest. So I would just say to everyone that we need to think about how we wanna spend that bond money. I mean, tonight, we heard the director say to the finance director that $32,000 was going to be spent on the walking tracks, something that I happen to support. But that's a capital project that has to be approved in the budget, and you cannot, in the upcoming budget, you cannot amend, I've said this a million times, the charter says you cannot amend the capital budget in the middle of the year. Right? So I think we all need to be careful about saying, you know, this money is for this or that. That's a decision we need to make as a group. And it isn't, it isn't a project until we vote that it's a project and the mayor signs it.
Director Strom, would you like to respond?
Yeah. My first response is regarding, in the capital budget for last year, there was money set aside for the fields at Cranston West. There's additional money that was approved by the Planning Commission that's gonna be in this year's budget for additional costs at that field. For instance, lights, bleaches, press box, et cetera. So there is been approval in the capital budget. And when this year's capital budget comes before the council, the council has a right to either accept it or reject it. But right now, there's over $1 million that's been targeted for the field and all the other extremities at that facility.
I think I agree with everything you said. I just wanna make it clear, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but yes, last year, we voted, I believe, $800,000.
I think it was $950,000.
$950,000? Okay. $950,000 for the field, but that's it?
So far, yes.
So far. Somebody else has made a proposal, the Planning Commission? I wasn't aware of what the Planning Commission did.
The Planning Commission.
But the final decision on whether that additional money gets spent.
Will be approved in the budget session.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So we'll take that up during the budget session. Are you all done, Councilman Styches?
Good.
Thank you. Councilman McCrory, you had one other issue?
Yes, sir. And I'll be brief. I don't know the feasibility of this, Director Perillo. I've been asked from a few constituents, the possibility. Right now, the boat pickups are scheduled in September and March, if I'm not mistaken. And I don't know if it's possible to add another, what I'm, what I'm suggesting, what I'm proposing is months four, seven, and 10, which would be April, July, and October. It seems that March isn't utilized much because of the, you don't know what kind of weather you're gonna get. And if we can't get the extra one, I'm wondering if it's possible to make it April and October.
I could speak to Director Mason about that. When I brought it up to him tonight, he told me an extra bulky waste pickup would be between $20,000 and $25,000. I think the scheduling is the way it is now currently, because that's kind of waste management's downtime, right? March and September. So we would have to work it out with them if we wanted to change our members' dates.
That's fine. If you could look into it.
Yeah, I will. And that data, I'm assuming that money, we have to, the extra money would have to come from Director Mason's budget somewhere. I'm not, I'm gonna say whether we can do that or not, but that's the approximate cost.
Thank you, sir. Any given you can do, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Director Kroupp, does that require citizens to just call up waste management directly?
Yes.
And is there still, there's still time left in this month under the current program?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Donigan, you had a couple of items.
Thank you. The first is for Director Strom. When speaking with some constituents about the upcoming budget process, they were wondering about ways that the budget could be more and understood by members of the public. about ways that the budget could be more, and are understood by members of the public. Obviously, not everyone can get to the meetings. And the school department does something where they kind of have a brief, I don't know, annotation of X amount of money has been allocated to this, or X, X amount of money more allocated this year because of XYZ. Is it possible that in this upcoming budget, there could be similar explanations on, you know, this department is getting this much more funding, you know, 2% increase because, I don't, you know, salaries or whatever, whatever it might be? That way, the public can kind of have a better idea of this is why more money's going here or this is...
I mean, I don't wanna be, sometimes I say things that sounds like I'm a little curt, but if the public wants to know information, they should attend the budget meetings. At the budget meetings, the committee brings out certain things. They ask about, are there salary increases, benefit increases? Why is this line greater this year than last year? There's explanations during those budget sessions for every department. So my feeling is that, you know, when we do a budget, I meet, the processes are, I meet with every department, I bring it to the mayor after I discuss it with him, tweak certain things, bring it to the mayor, he prepares his budget. Then we have an open budget session, I think, for the general public. That's the first meeting. Am I right, Mary, that the public has the right to speak at that session?
There is a general, the first public hearing is on the open budget.
Right, right. When the mayor gives his address, we have the budget, you know, hot copies of the budget. Anybody is entitled to look at that. Then they have the right to come to this meeting prior to when we give it the budget sessions. They can ask questions at that time. I believe even after, Councilman Favick, let me know if I'm wrong, even after we have budget sessions, we always make, it's only in the public that we like to ask any additional questions. So I think we try to be as transparent as possible, and most of the time between us, there's very limited public participation. So...
Just, just to add to that, Director, the, the school committee has its budget hearings open to the public, which they've already done, and we've just got a copy of the school department's proposed budget.
It's, excuse me, it's adopted now.
It's already adopted by the school committee, but now they present it to us. We're gonna have, you know, we go line by line, item by line item almost with the budget for every department. So you haven't been here yet for it, but hold on to your hat. But it's a, we're gonna do a Saturday, this first, the first one, so it's gonna be easy for people to come, listen, can listen. It gets boring at times, and, you know, it's painstaking, but we do listen to every department head, we ask questions, and then we open it, we open it to the public. If you want to follow up on that.
The only thing is, I, I, in no way was I trying to suggest that the process wasn't transparent or that the department wasn't being transparent. I just, the only reason I brought this up is for the people that can't get their, you know, one or two sentences on whatever it might be, might be helpful, but, but I understand your, your...
Well, in addition to that, I think Councilman Stychos will tell you that any, prior to meeting with each department, at times, he's provided me a list of questions that I've always been able to answer or in preparation to answer at the budget session. And if you have a constituent that has any questions or issues, feel free to present that to me by email. I'd be happy to answer that in, in lieu of the fact that they can't attend. Okay?
Councilman Stychos, so what's your follow-up on that? Yeah, just a little suggestion that, Bob, you do a sheet that I think is only in that big binder that we get, and it, it has, it's one page, and it says things like, "We're assuming a 2% increase in health insurance."
It's an assumption sheet.
Assumption sheet, correct. I mean, that might be helpful to have in the, the short version of the budget.
Because you're correct, Councilman, it is with the, I call it the big book that we pass to the council, but I can provide those, I believe, I'm almost positive those assumption sheets are in a separate pile next to the short version. But if it's not, I make sure it is.
That's, that's in the short version?
Yeah, but I think it's, it's a separate...
Oh, I see. I think it would be good to put it with the, because that's, I think that's...
It summarizes it.
Yeah, it's a really good job.
A highlighter, I should say.
And, yeah, and I would like to say that Bob is really excellent on answering questions. You know, often, you know, it takes him a while because he doesn't know the answer off the top of his head, but he, most of them...
Jeez, you just had a compliment, and then you're two words of chaos.
Yeah, that was pretty bad, wasn't it? I think we'll move on. Councilman Donigan, you had another issue?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure most people in the room today are aware of the DOT project going on at Park Avenue and, and Buffalo. It, you know, I live right off Gansett, there's certainly an increase in traffic there. One of the issues, though, is as cars are, the detour takes you around Cranston Street onto Gansett, and Director Perillo, you were great in following up on my increase about getting some signs up to restrict that to only local traffic. I've received some emails from constituents. I went and walked and knocked on doors and spoke with residents in those areas, you know, Oak Street, Maple, Trainer, Duckworth, in that area. And in the hour that I spent out there, you know, I saw at least half of those cars just blow right through the stop sign. So, you know, the weather's getting nicer, kids are gonna start walking to school, people are gonna start going to the park that's right there, we have pedestrian foot traffic. I'm just concerned with the amount of new vehicular traffic coming through that area that wasn't there before. It, you know, I just foresee, you know, an issue, and it's certainly disrupting the neighborhood. So I'm wondering, you know, I know putting a police officer in there for nine months is just not a possibility, it just would cost too much. So I guess I'm asking what other residents are there, if any, to try and alleviate some of the issues.
Major, could we make that part of the care detail, maybe, that area?
Yeah. The biggest issue right now is, and Director Pearl notified us last week, and we spoke with the DOT resident engineer, Bill Wally, who has been on top of this issue since inception of the project, when they had a meeting at DOT headquarters. That was always gonna be a concern. So they've added additional signs, but the problem we've, we've found is that when people come down Park Avenue, eastbound or westbound, their GPS and their navigation waves, Google, if you put it in there, it sends you down Trainer Street. So everybody going eastbound down Park Avenue turns left onto Dire Avenue, and their GPS navigation waves sends them up Trainer Street. Now, what happens is by the time they take, the minute their navigation tells them, turn right, they take it, as soon as you, because of the, the, the construction of the, of the Maple, there comes out a little triangle. By the time they make that right turn, it's too late where the sign is, so they're moving the signs out, and they turn left onto Dire Avenue, so it'll be a short running curve. But we have officers out there, and Director Pearl called us, I know that Councilman Hopkins himself has some concerns about Bane, so we have two officers out there right now, every day, including this week, so we'll see how that works. As far as the stop sign, that's a separate issue, we'll have to address that with, like Director Pearl said, a care detail. But we also have a message board we're gonna put out there this week, an actual sign, the digital sign, that will keep the detour going straight, see if that helps.
Thank you.
But it's, it's ongoing, it's, it's, it's one of those things that we really, we anticipated that, and I don't think anybody figured the waves and the boom, the GPS navigation was gonna send over that street. And that's, that's the issue, right there in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Major. Is that, is that, Councilman Donigan?
Well, I'm asking that I, that I don't have on here, Councilman Papaskas, a different day, but Saturday, April 27th, at 9:30, we're gonna have cleanup along with the bike path, starting in, kind of over by the old Lowe's, or by the Lowe's, through 43 Main, Main Track.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brady, you're up next.
Thank you. You know, honestly, I've brought this up in the past, adopt a spot update, adopt a spot update from the administration. The spring is coming, the residents are doubting wanting to adopt the beginning of the neighborhood, expanding the old main road. Obviously, last year, even prior to being a councilman, it seemed that I was heavily involved in adopting basketball courts throughout the city, dog parks in Edred. Each morning, actually, I visited this morning, I'm not really pleased with how the grass grew, so I followed up with the landscaping companies, so, you know. And, you know, also, I meant to, I meant to understood that, you know, with these projects, like what Councilman Hopkins did, you know, raising tens of, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, and it's obviously on the city to maintain these projects after they're done, but it's, it's community-based funding, it helps it through sponsorship. I still think it's a great idea to allow residents and different people, I mean, step up to, and obviously, like Councilman Stichos said earlier, we do, we have so much money to have businesses and different residents wanting to update spots throughout the city. I think it's a great building that we should adopt, so I look forward to making sure we update and build a lot of that.
I met last week with Solicitor Wilson, Director Libtore, and Director Mason. We are gonna move forward, that we're pretty much going to adopt what the state has for a program, including the liability insurance for the property. We're also gonna make sure there's a Digsafe requirement in there, because there are some, in that particular area, there are some underground lines, Director Mason said, so that needs to be approved by Digsafe. So basically, we're hoping to have it on board. Hopefully, the application should be done by April 15th. First case scenario, May 1st. Basically, it's gonna go through Poxon Recreation. So Poxon Recreation will have the applications, let us submit the Digsafe paperwork, the liability insurance, and the application to Director Libtore. He approves it, we're good to go.
Thank you so much, Director, I think that sounds like a great plan. I appreciate your sponsorships through this process. In addition, I have a request that's gonna speak on the next day. It's something I've had the pleasure of attending the last few years, and I think it's a great thing that you do for the city, and I continue to commend you on, you know, you do, you believe is right, and I definitely look up to you. But with that being said, you know, it's something I'm gonna try to adopt in my work with you as moving forward, to do our community, both cleaning days, so hopefully, maybe we'll see, you know, six different roads, we're adopting a green day award that they are putting on, and we should do it this way, we should get Lake Park, so, I'm sorry what you said, going into that, but I wanted to let you know that it's something I've been looking to expand within my work.
Councilman Papaskas, thank you. And Councilman Brady, I appreciate your kind words, and when you pick that spot in Ward 4, let me know, and I'll be there, and I hope Papaskas' family will be there. So that being said, Machinique Lake Park cleanup, the Earth Day cleanup, this is the fourth year, it's gonna be on April 20th, 10:00 AM, we meet in the Cranston West parking lot. It just takes about 45 minutes to an hour. This year, we're gonna try to expand it a little bit and go up to the bike path near Sherman Avenue and attack that area as well. The, the trash is never-ending, so we wanna try to attack it and get on the ball with that. So that's just information I want everybody to know. Also, there's something not on the docket, Director Perillo, I just want to let you know about 24 South Street. I've been in communication with, um, the school committee woman, Regina, about a vacant house, spent about a year and a half. There's no utilities going to the house, and it's in really bad shape, and neighbors are concerned about rodents and...
24 South Street.
24 South Street. And then one more thing, just an maintenance issue. My OCD is kicking in, that light's been out for like three or four months, that light, can we, can we change it? The light bulb?
All right.
Yeah. No, it just, it's, you know, my OCD is kicking in, so, thank you.
Just a follow-up on Councilman Papaskas. I'm gonna ask him to help me, Councilman Brady, you've got a kick out of this, I wanna try to piggyback on his cleanup day. I had some people offer to do some cleanup in Ward 6, and I'd like to do Brayton Avenue Playground because I've gotten a lot of complaints over the years, and the spring seems to be, you know, it goes crazy once the baseball starts, the softball, and those fields are very active in April, so I'll see if we can, you know, help, if you can help me coordinate that. Any, any other council member? Councilmember Vargas?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't send anything over to Councilmember Communication, whatever. I was sitting there, just kind of wondering, is your street sweeping schedule? Does that happen already in itself? Can I have access to that information? And the reason for that is that I respectfully would like to post that and let my constituents know, that I remember the street super stressful here, some of the residents ended last year when it happened. I wish that they were notified so that they could move their vehicles and connect to go clean. So, are you guys gonna schedule us to when it's gonna happen? I think maybe once a year?
That's correct.
I would, I would, I would be shaking up, the, the second day or...
Councilmember, if I can interrupt this for a second? Yeah, that, every year, they start at a different side of the city. Last year, they got to me in late June, I think, or really late. So I don't know where they're starting this year. I know that they tend to, I don't know if Director Perillo, you can, I don't know if you know, but Director Mason, so...
Through the chair?
Yes.
They alternate every other year. Last year, they started on the east side, so this year, they'll be starting on the west side, so we'll be swept in probably June.
Yeah, I waited, last year, I waited quite a while, so I, I forget which year it is and what, alternating, and you had something else as well.
And I, I did, um, the, the other one was, Papaskas, could you speak into that? Oh, I'm sorry. It took a while, so I apologize. The Broad Street project that's going on right now, you know, that's actually right in Pawtucket Village, do we know what the estimated project time that's going to last? Have they been in touch with the city? I'm actually not even, sorry, that's National Grade Events Water Department via Providence Water. I, I got a couple of, I've been in a lot of calls, actually, from business owners in that area, particularly with this past Saturday, they were there, and the business, the business didn't go as, as usual on the Saturday, and they, they just wish that there was more notice or, or at least some sort of a heads up as to how long this project's going to be. Some of them don't know, and I don't know myself.
Yeah, I'll follow up with Director Mason. Yeah, I'll follow up with Director Mason tomorrow.
We agree.
Find out the timing of that project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Anything else? All, all businesses, any old business now working?
Um, no, there is not.
Next, introduction to the business, if you're familiar with purposes.
Proposed ordinance 3-1901 and amendment of title 17.04 of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled zoning code violations sponsored by Councilmember Stychos, refer to the ordinance committee for hearing on May 16th. Proposed ordinance 3-1902 and amendment of title, title 2.4 of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled administration personnel, municipal court, fines, penalties, and imprisonment, sponsored by Councilmember Stychos, refer to ordinance committee for hearing on April 11th. Resolution creating a diversity commission sponsored by Council President Forina, refer to ordinance committee for hearing on April 11th. Resolution encouraging United States President Donald J. Trump and the United States Congress to fund 21st century community learning centers sponsored by Councilmembers Donigan and Vargas, refer to Finance Committee for hearing on April 1st. Resolution approving the school district five-year master plan sponsored by Council President Forina, refer to Finance Committee for hearing on April 1st. The filing claims will be referred for hearing on Thursday, April 11th. The filing of property damage claims, the law from alleged incidents. Angela Bernardo, February 28th, 2018. Wilson Maria Ponte Martinez, February 15th, 2019. Robert Conti, February 16th, 2019. Technic Inc., February 18th, 2019. David Ferreira, February 18th, 2019. Donald Capro, February 21st, 2019. Brittany Boudreaux, February 22th... Brittany Boudreaux, February 22nd, 2019. Sean Green, February 25th, 2019. Angela Lorenzi, February 25th, 2019. Shaleen Burgos, February 26th, 2019. Andrea Diamond, February 26th through 27th, 2019. Andrew Diamond, March 3rd through the 4th, 2019. Courtney Maribou, March 4th, 2019. Odette Turin, March 4th, 2019. Robert Hanson, March 4th, 2019. Richard Isco and Susan Donovan, March 4th, 2019. Ismeline Guzman, March 6th, 2019. Vincent Orso, March 12th, 2019. Melissa Nunes, March 12th, 2019. And Kun Danh, March, that's D-A-N-H, March 18th, 2019. The following are personal injury claims. William Guyer, January 24th, 2019. Cynthia Silva, February 5th, 2019. And Mindy Knight, March 13th, 2019. And that's all I have.
Any miscellaneous business on the court? Miscellaneous business, we have that notification zoning map correction?
Just the drug identification. We need a motion to retire to connect.
Okay, okay. For that or everything?
For all of them.
All of them, okay. I'll entertain a motion that it refer the new business to the respective committees. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Any non-clear, please take the roll. Councilmember Papavskis? Yes, that passes. Any other business? No other business? Budget hearings begin April 6th on a Saturday. At, I believe it's 9:30, Madam Court, 9:30. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, I pose for adjourned.